So let's go ahead and call our works joint work session to order. Welcome, everybody, to our joint work session with between our Sandy City Council and our planning commission. To go over some new Senate bill and some which is an add on that's some old house bills and all kinds of fun stuff. And Jeff, do you want to call the roll?
Sure, Councilor Pete's here.
That's for small one here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Excuse for now until he arrives.
Councilor Walker.
Excuse.
Councilor Exert.
Here.
Councilor Hokinson.
Here.
Mayor Palin.
Here. All right. Well, welcome, everybody. Thank you to our planning commissioners for joining us on this. I wish I could say that we are all really excited to go through this. I'm sure there's a variety of different opinions on that. But Jordan, why don't you, Jordan and Kelly, why don't you guys kind of get us going for our conversation here tonight?
Yeah, so I'll just introduce Emily Mahargar, senior planner, and then she'll be going through the slideshow. Or the presentation and introducing Sean Edging from DLCD, who's also going to be explaining some stuff around the Senate bill as well. So Emily, if you want to take it away.
All right. Yeah, so we're actually going to start with Sean. And he's a housing planner with the State Department of Land Conservation Development. And he's going to go over kind of the Senate Bill 458, just a general overview to give you some context. And then I will then dive into some of the more specific code modifications and focus on some discretionary items. So it's Senate Bill 458, there aren't many discretionary items, but we are proposing some other code changes. While we are looking at these chapters that are related to clear and objectives. So there are a few items that are discretionary that we'd like to get your feedback on. But for now, we will start also hand it over to Sean, who will give you some background on Senate Bill 458.
Excellent. Thank you, Emily. And do I have the ability to screen share?
Yes, you do.
Okay, perfect. Let me. Set up the PowerPoint. All right. Are you folks able to see that?
We are.
Very perfect. All right, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Sean Edging. I'm a housing planner here at the Department of Land Conservation and Development. Thank you, guys, for inviting me here tonight. I was approached by your planning staff, including Kelly, to provide just a presentation, kind of giving a basic overview or just rundown of Senate Bill 458. Before I kind of dive into this presentation, I wanted to start by just prefacing. You know, this is a bill that it was passed in the 2021 legislative session that provides, you know, kind of legislative direction to cities throughout the state. Really, my role here at DLCD is just to be kind of a resource and to provide information about the bill. And so really what I'm just going through here today, I'm not going to be diving into a lot of the policy considerations or legislative intent. I'm just going to describe the mechanics of the bill. And I'm sure you folks, as commissioners, will want to discuss and have some policy conversations around there. But just to be very clear about what my role is here tonight. So with that, let's let's dive a little bit into the context of the bill. So this is a follow up to House Bill 2001, a bill that you guys are already familiar with and have adopted code amendments to to, you know, comply and fulfill legislative direction. That is intended to follow up on a very specific issue, and that is one related to homeownership. So as a reminder, for those who might not be familiar with House Bill 2001, it has a requirement for cities above 10,000. So the city of Sandy, in this case, this is the requirement that I'm focusing on to allow a duplex. Quote, on each lot or parcel that allows for the development of a single family detached dwelling, right? And this is a process that, you know, you folks have already been through and have kind of adopted code amendments to comply with and that's already kind of on the books and existing today. But what this bill intended to kind of follow up on was a problem related to homeownership. So if you think about a duplex and the idea of having, you know, two lots or sorry, two units on a lot, right? And, you know, and really, this can apply to any middle housing. The barrier that was kind of discussed a lot was the inability for those individual units to be sold in a fee simple way. So you wouldn't be able to have people be able to own separately individually units. Instead, it would have to, you know, be owned by one party and then rented out, right? So that was kind of a barrier towards achieving kind of a the a goal of increasing homeownership options for for Oregonians. And so what this bill was intended to do was to follow up on House Bill 2001 by saying, all right, if somebody, you know, develops a or proposes a middle housing. Development and it meets all of our kind of locally adopted codes and building codes, you know, all of those types of things. It can apply for a kind of expedited process for a land division. And then those individual units can be sold fee simple. So people have access to a duplex as a homeownership option for them, rather than only being available as a rental product, right? And so what the kind of specifics of the bill are, it has a lot of kind of mechanics that I'll be going through that 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 kind of prescribe this process and how it it kind of shakes out. And so specifically what it says is if a an applicant, you know, comes through the door and they have a middle housing, say a duplex that they have demonstrated meets local codes and will meet building codes. They are eligible to apply for a middle housing land division. And there's kind of some specific requirements that they have to meet and demonstrate in order to be eligible for this. And then there's additional requirements that the city can can impose on top of that. So. The first one, as I've talked about, it has to demonstrate compliance with locally adopted codes, the things you folks have already adopted into your development codes as well as building code. It specifies that it can only, it has to result in exactly one unit per lot. So there would be no ADUs that would be available on any of these lots that could be provided. It's in kind of expedited process. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And there's kind of minimal additional requirements that comes out of that that can be layered on top of it. There are kind of specifications in the bill for specific things that cities can require that I'll talk about in a minute. And then finally, once you actually have divided the lot into two units, there are no further divisions that can come out of that. So there's not going to be a Russian nesting doll effect of kind of continuing divisions down into, you know, ad absurd, ad absurdity, I guess. So moving on to the the basic requirements. So for any proposal in any city that is requesting a middle housing land division, they have to meet a few specific requirements. First, as we've talked about, right, it has to meet locally adopted development standards as well as building code. The second is that it has to provide separate utilities to each one of the units. And it has to provide easements for not just the maintenance and access to each one of those utilities. But it also for any kind of shared common area, things that people on the site would be using kind of in common or in aggregate. So they have to demonstrate all of those easements are provided. And then finally, it has to result in exactly one lot per unit. And in addition to this, cities have the ability to kind of add on additional requirements. One of the first ones is if the lot did not initially provide a frontage requirement, the city is able to condition that a frontage improvement must be required to. Approve the the middle housing land division. I should mention that cities already retain the ability to require frontage improvements for duplexes if they require them for single family homes. But there are some scenarios where single family homes are exempted specifically from providing things like frontage improvements or right of way dedications. And what this bill explicitly clarifies is if they're requesting a lot division for a duplex, the city can require those additional frontage improvements, right of way dedications, if it was insufficient, those types of things. They're also able to condition, right, no further lot divisions or provision of any kind of ADUs on the site, right? They can they can preclude that option from happening. And they could also require that the final plat that is submitted to the county or recorded with the county notates that this approval was given under this this bill. So Senate Bill 458 or, you know, as a middle housing land division. So that way, in the future, it's very clear, oh, this was provided under this, there's no further lot divisions that can happen from that.
Hey Sean.
And, oh, yeah.
Shin, are you wanting to wait till the end?
Sean.
Sorry. You okay to interject with a question or two, or are you wanting us to wait till the end?
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead, Kathleen. But do you mind going back one slide?
So. Under Senate Bill 458, this looks like a big house that's being divided into two units or something like that. Are we, are you saying that this house is getting put subdivided partitioned so that half the house is on one lot and half the house is on the other lot? Is that what this picture would do under?
No, no. No, actually. So this is just an example of two buildings. So the first one on top is actually just a single family home. And the building below it is a is a triplex. And the only way you can really kind of tell the difference between one or the other is the number of mailboxes that are on there. So, and this is actually pretty important.
But yeah, I mean, but still all one building. And so the upstairs is a separate owned unit property versus the downstairs. Is that?
Yeah, actually, one one thing I should mention. So there's this explicit requirement that each lot has to contain exactly one unit, right? And if you have two, like duplex units, ones on top of the other, right? You have no way to geometrically do that, right? Because you have a two dimensional space that you have to put it on. So this means that in order to qualify for a Senate Bill 458 land division, the two duplexes would have to be side by side. They would have to be, you know, divided horizontally due to the geometric constraints associated with planning.
That's why it was confusing to me when I saw that second unit upstairs. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Mayor, we have the city attorney's hand up.
Oh, yeah, please. Sean, strictly speaking, couldn't you do a two unit condo with up and downstairs and and the common property would be common elements? And then you would have two units on two lots?
Hypothetically, but then you also have to deal with condo liability insurance and the fact that most condo projects are generally very large in scale because they tend to be lawsuit magnets. So small scale condominiums are actually not really an option for most middle housing types. This is actually kind of an area of state policy where there's some interest because there's some pretty restrictive state laws around, you know, the level to which there is kind of liability that that can result in essentially these projects not happening at all.
So while it's strictly speaking possible, the transactional costs or liability risks you think would preclude a two unit condominium in this case?
It makes it functionally impossible.
Okay, can I add one thing? We actually do have one two unit condominium. The city of Sandy already, and that occurred prior to House Bill 2001 even. So it is already allowed and the the county surveyor will allow recording of it. But as Sean said, I've only seen one in my tenure in planning, less than about five units, so.
All right, can I continue?
Please do.
Perfect. Thank you, folks. All right. So with with these conditions, right, so the bill kind of specifies the, you know, the underlying requirements that it has to meet. And it specifies these additional conditions that cities are able to require in in exchange for an approval of a Senate Bill 458 lot division. So they can condition these additional things. It also specifies that there the only approval criteria that it can apply to a middle housing land division is what's already specified in this section. So it lays out very explicitly, here are the things that you can, you know, any application must provide. Here are the things that a city can also condition on top of that, and then nothing else, essentially. And the idea there is that the city or has already applied kind of its underlying development standards, right? The standards that you folks adopted to that that middle housing type, right? And so the intent here is to make a very kind of simplified process. It's kind of a checklist of of things that that it is complying with. And then moving on to the process, so the additional kind of maybe quirk of this bill is that it utilizes a process called an expedited land division. Which is a maybe somewhat obscure provision from organ revised statutes that sets forth a kind of quicker review process and tract. For the for any kind of proposal that comes through. This this pathway hasn't historically been used all that much because there's kind of some quirks to it that that haven't made it very useful for what its original purpose was. But the intent here is that it provides a roughly 63 day window. So when an applicant comes through, they demonstrated compliance with, you know, applicable local zoning codes and building codes. And they come through the door and they they submit a complete application for a middle housing land division. The city then has, after they make that determination of completeness, they have 63 days from from that date until they they issued a decision. And there's kind of very specific processes that are set forth if, you know, there's kind of like appeals or challenges to to the decision. And it kind of sets forth, you know, how the council can can respond or or respond to the deadlines that are associated with a particular application and how. Like what what process the the. It's an appeals process would go through.
We have a quick question for you.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, 63 day clock seems kind of like not the ability to do that from just a staff point of view, timing for. Calendars for planning commission and then appeals through city council. Is that all of that the same as what you normally have 120 day clock going to fit in the 63 day clock?
Yeah, so this, these types of decisions, so the the process is very prescriptive. And it tells exactly what the different steps are as far as a review goes. This actually doesn't, this isn't reviewed by a planning commission and they don't actually issue the final approval. It's really if you have a single lot and they build a duplex on it and they apply for a Senate Bill 458 land division. It's going to be a division of those that one lot into two lots essentially, and that's done at a staff level.
So basically. Anyone's gonna be able to, I mean.
Can we let, can we let Chris actually explain? It would be, it would actually be done through a hearings officer. Chris, do you want to kind of lay out how that how that's been done at the expedited land process? We just have never had one in Sandy yet.
Right. I I just want to point out, as Sean mentioned, that under the statute, no public hearings are allowed. So there won't be a planning commission hearing, there won't be a city council hearing, there's no public input that other than at the very front end, you can submit written comments. If the staff decision is appealed, it goes to a hearings officer and from the hearings officer to Luba. So there's no opportunity for input from either the planning commission or the city council under the statute.
If I can make a correction, it actually goes to the Court of Appeals.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, it skips Luba, yeah.
It's Luba goes directly.
It's it's a it's a strange statute.
Yeah, and 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 the Court of Appeals is going to be thrilled to get all these hearings officers' decisions.
Who has the money to do that?
It's very, it's impressive.
Question on the minimum lot size code requirements? Are those, Chris, this is a question for you.
We're going to get into that more. If we let Sean first finish and then Emily is going to be going into more.
Yeah, I'm probably not the best person to respond to those that that level of detail.
Yeah. And and the good news is that's actually the end of the presentation. So we can we can dive into any questions or.
So. Kathleen, did you have a follow up?
Yeah, I I mean, my question is that. We have minimum lot sizes. First of all, we have duplexes allowed on everything in this entire city, all the zones except for SFR. That's the only exception. What this is doing is saying not only can we put duplexes everywhere else, which we have more than half of our city zone for, you know, low and medium and high density. But now are all of our SFR can not only be put duplexes, but now partitioned into two small lots. So this thing said a city may also require, you know, all the things that we had in in our code before. You know, it must meet local standards and building code, blah, blah, blah. And we had a minimum lot size code for 7,500 square feet, which we, it took us a long time to get that because a lot of our SFR got developed under R1 densities. Rather than S than than 7,500, you know, we have five, 6,000 foot lots in single family residential. So I want to know what happened to our SFR 7,500 minimum lot size under this bill.
So please remember, staff's not the one leading the charge on this. This is a legislative change.
I'm not faulting Sean or Kelly or anybody.
So that the simple answer is that it basically goes away in some regards.
Or we make it bigger.
You could potentially look at doing that in the future, yeah, as part of the compliance process.
It still applies to the parent law, which is like the actual, you know, so you'd have the subdivision created with however many lots are allowed. And then if you decide to put the duplex and then split it through the Senate Bill 458, the original parent law before it split has to still meet all of those requirements.
But there's nothing to stop a developer from coming in and saying on SFR land, they want to put duplexes on every lot. And then filing in for partitions of each lot and ending up with 3,000 some odd 500 square foot lots for the whole subdivision. Is that?
Yeah, that's.
I I mean, I wouldn't say there's nothing.
Three days with no process.
So I would, I wouldn't jump to the conclusion that there's nothing stopping them. They still have to meet all the other code requirements. So we saw of off street and on street parking requirements, minimum lot frontage requirement. So they'd have to meet the whole development code still. So there might be cases where they cannot actually meet that.
But our transportation would be based on the single family, not.
Correct.
Too. So we would be have, we will be potentially overcommitted by past by by once again.
Potentially.
Parking.
Potentially.
Parks and other amenities that normally are factors.
You would also have to have a marketplace that would allow for a developer to want to do that.
Right, so see. Agreed. You wouldn't see that happening. Marketability for a full development going back into all duplexes probably wouldn't happen. Although, you know, we have developments that don't have adequate parking today.
That's right.
Correct.
And there seems to be a market for them because they sell.
Anywhere in Portland.
Sell many more. So it's just a matter of how many they can stuff into a certain lot. And that's, that's our legislature.
Well. So. The car, I'm going to remind you what we decided before we knew about this is the last time this came to us in April and May of last year, this council approved detached duplexes.
Yes.
Okay, so it's really when, you know, when you and I think of a duplex, shared walls, the whole thing. That's not what we're talking about. So when you have detached duplexes, those are single family homes, detached homes under 35. It's it's basically R2, single detached dwelling. So 3,500 square.
I mean, I would actually say that detached duplexes will give the look and appearance of single family homes a lot better than if we only allowed attached duplexes.
Well, that may be, but I don't, that's not the appearance I want to give. I, you know, I don't.
So the, so what I'm, but what I'm saying is, so if somebody chose to do a duplex, some cities have limited that they would all have to be attached. But then you have a whole bunch of attached looking houses everywhere. By allowing detached, we do give more of the appearance of a single family home.
But I believe it wouldn't be used as much if they were attached dwellings. So.
Right, you're saying that you're create, you're creating an incentive to do it.
By doing detached units, because then they get the R2 zoning, right? So.
Yeah, I would actually. And yeah, I don't know what, I don't think you're creating an incentive, but.
Well, detached is definitely preferred over attached.
Right, that's that's so that would be the.
But yeah, you.
Situation.
You'd still have to meet the setbacks and everything, though. So if you have a smaller lot, it might actually be harder to meet the development code with a detached duplex is what I'm saying.
7,500 square, you know, to start with. And if you can get, you know, you can obviously, because the R2 is like, what, 3,500 or 3,000 or something?
I think it's 5,500. For the R1 and then the R2, I believe, doesn't actually have a minimum lot size, I believe.
Yeah, so anyway, that's my concern about all this is that we, I think we need to roll that decision back to be attached duplexes. And I think we need to, you know, be looking at our lot size if this isn't going to be the possibility. Again, I want a a lot of, you know, avail affordable housing and I want multifamily units and I want, you know, duplexes and all that. I just also want some SFR because what we've heard from folks is that, you know, when they move out of their starter home, they they need to have a bigger lot to be able to move to. So and what we've seen before, and I'll just finish up and then let Don go, is that the developers, not all of them, but quite a few of them. Go in and put as many units as they can possibly squeeze in to a development.
Right.
That's their, you know, that's their motivation. And if they can make SFR into R2 with 3,500 foot lots detached houses, that's what we'll have. And we will no longer have any true SFR with a room for a swing set and so that's my concern.
Do the swing set, you just tie the bar between the. So mine goes back to the question about the difference between expedited land use process and a middle housing expedited land use process. Because they sell both terms and they proposed code changes. And maybe you started to answer, but it sounds like expedited was a thing that's been around for a long time, but apparently it's not really reflected in our code or we don't do it or haven't done it. And so this new house bill is then leveraging that old process that was around before. Is that a correct interpretation?
Emily, can you speak to that? Then, oh. You've been the one actually doing the code edits. I think we already had expedited land process. It's just we're not getting any requests from developers, correct?
Yeah, our code already referenced expedited land divisions. There's an ORS that was one of the attachments that goes through the process. So whether it's for the middle housing land division or something else, it's the same process.
It was a preexisting process that was leveraged by this new bill. That's that was the key. So it's not a new process. It's just being leveraged for a different purpose.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I I honestly don't know why or how, but we haven't, in my tenure here, we've never had anybody ask for an expedited land division process. And I don't know why, but other cities, I I guess, have been getting their requests more often.
Additional questions?
So if we have a subdivision of SFR lots and a developer goes in there and wants to put duplexes on everyone and subdivide them. We have to allow that. We have to, it doesn't go to planning commission or city council or anything like that. And we have to say yes to it. And there's not even a Luba appeal process. Is that my understanding? And it's in done in 63 days. Is that the sweet deal that we've just created here for developers?
Well, again, we're not creating anything. This is a.
That's being forced on us by.
Chris.
Not anybody in this room.
Yeah, yeah, I would just, I just want to remind everyone, because I I suffer from a little bit of the same, I guess I'd call it disease that Kathleen does, and it's called passionate talking. You know, in our family, we're not fighting, we're conversating, right? And so let's just, you know, a reminder, I I I know Kathleen very well. She, at the, at this point, I've gotten to know her, we're talking about the issue, not at anyone particular on staff or that's on on this call, so.
So Chris, you know, I don't, you know, I don't know if I've actually worked through that process that Counselor Walker laid out. So most of the issues I've been thinking about would be, you already have a subdivision plat that's been approved. And then somebody comes in with each individual lots and they request land division. I don't, if somebody came in.
Can you elaborate on that process, maybe from the very beginning? So when would the planning commission be involved? And then when would this new process take?
So that's why I need clarification from our attorney, because I don't know the answer to that. So if if somebody came up with a subdivision, I believe they would still have to plat it under the existing code. And then each lot would come through a separate division for the for the middle housing land division process. I don't think they could just jump straight to a subdivision with middle housing. I don't think that's the bill. Is that correct?
The lots wouldn't exist at that point to be divided.
But, but sorry, but if somebody has, for example, a 7,500 square foot lot, they can come in because single family dwellings are allowed on that. They can apply for a middle housing land division to put in any number of duplexes, as long as each resulting duplex is on its individual lot. And you can put on the plat, is that not correct? Sean, please correct me here.
Yeah, no, that's not true. So if you have a, say, in your single family residential zone, you have a minimum lot size of 7,500 for a single family home. For a duplex, right, it has to be allowed on that lot. So you would be able to apply a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet for that one duplex. And then it's eligible for a Senate Bill 458 lot division. So you could only.
So that's 7,500 square foot lot could be divided into two separate lots.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that, sorry, they have two duplex, that has one duplex on each, so.
Has no, two individual duplex units.
Half of duplex, half of duplex on each.
So, yeah, that's a different question.
Well, right, right, but I'm trying to figure, so on, but on each lot, there's how many duplexes? Yeah, under a middle housing land division, you have to have one dwelling unit. Right. On each lot. So for a duplex, you could take a standard lot, R5 zone, 5,000 square foot lot. Put a duplex on it and divide that in half with one dwelling unit, one half of the duplex on each side of 25, you know, on each lot of 2,500 square feet.
Thank you. So I want to dumb down that example that you offered even further. If I own that $7,500 lot and I have these aspirations to build and split, as we've talked about. Do I first, who validates that I have met all those requirements that were outlined in the presentation, including this building codes and the offsets? Do I self determine that?
You have to do, just like any land use process, you put together an application and then we review it.
And it would go through staff.
Correct.
And if it was really weird, it would go to the planning commission.
No. It, the appeal rights would go to a hearings officer. In this case, it would be our municipal judge, most likely.
Do I, so but so.
So no, no planning commission.
So what I saw was that you have to verify that it meets all the requirements if it was a single family house on that single family lot. So does my original application get put in as though it were a single? Or do I just go straight to two on my initial?
Well, you'd be applying, I'm a little confused what you're asking. Well, you, you'd be applying, I'm a little confused what you're asking.
Well, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a lot confused.
It's taking, it's taking my example and saying, is, is that, and I guess I'd like Chris's take on that. You know, he's, he's talking about it on one single lot that somebody owns. I'm talking about, you know, either a one single lot or somebody's got fifty lots and they want to come in and subdivide each one of those as duplexes. Do they have to first get it all approved and reviewed under single family seventy five hundred square foot lots and then divide it? Or can they come in with this proposed, proposed process?
No, that, no, ma- ca- ca- councillor's, councillor Walker is correct. If you had, say, you know, three acres. You've got to come in and get that subdivided first into five thousand, seventy five hundred square foot lots, whatever the minimum lot size is for that zone.
Right.
Once that subdivision is approved, each one of those lots can then have a duplex on it. So if you created a sixty lot subdivision instead of sixty dwelling units, you could get a hundred and twenty, because you can put a duplex on each one.
Are they having to do, I mean, but they can kind of come in with their plat as if it was all duplexes?
Yeah.
Like with the driveway.
Well, I mean, mo- most subdivisions don't show the actual dwelling units. We make assumptions about dwelling units based on the zoning, right? If it's a single family zone and they want sixty lots, we assume sixty homes. Under this, I think we have to assume a hundred and twenty homes.
Gotcha.
So here, here's the two scenarios. You have a seventy five hundred, I put it on the whiteboard here. You have a seventy five hundred square foot lot. This is a, a attached duplex. So here's unit one. Unit one, here's unit two. Basically what this bill's doing is allowing you to put a lot line down the middle.
Yeah, right.
Basically, here's the other scenario where I'm saying, if you have unit one and unit two, both on this seventy five hundred square foot lot. They're detached, which the code also allows right now. You can put your lot line and then you have the look of two si- smaller single.
Right, but is that two processes or one?
That's really what we're trying to get to.
Yeah.
So, so, so the question, the question is, is, is do you get the duplex o- on there? And then have to go back through to, to, to invoke the Senate bill and again to get the lot divided, or can you do it all at one time?
Or all at one time or either.
Either, that's correct.
Okay. Lot division can occur first, the construction of the duplex can occur first, or they can occur concurrently.
Okay, that's what we're asking.
But it can't occur first if it's not, okay, it can't because.
Yeah, it's three different possible ways. And currently, uh, the buildings built first and then they put a lot line in, or the lot line goes in and then they build the duplex.
So staff is the only one who gets to put eyes on that and make sure that the requirements have met code.
That's correct.
Per the, per the Senate bill, correct.
And then, but if I had a seventy five, if I just built a single family resident on that first lot. You staff would see it, right?
What does that?
If I was just building this one house, not a duplex, not just building a house, unit one, right, just one unit. And I run through my normal process, staff looks at it, but if it needs funky things, exceptions or anything else, would it ever exceed the planning commission on a single house?
Only if they're asking for variances that would trigger it up to a planning commission review.
Right, so, so it could go to planning commission.
Yeah, but I.
Ultimately to council. But if I said, hey, I'm just gonna use this expedited process, then I could skip all the public input part.
Well.
Yeah.
Yes, except that, yes, except.
No, no, no.
Well, I was gonna say is, is that there's explicit criteria that has to be met with.
But only staff, only gets to weigh in on that.
Right, but if, if, if the, if the criteria is explicit, right, if you must meet, say, all ten points or whatever, whatever it is. It makes it, it makes it, yeah, there's no objectivity to it whatsoever, right? So. Chris, you wanted to jump in?
Sorry, Chris.
Yes, i- i- if I may, so it, there's usually almost no planning review for a single family dwelling on a residential lot. That goes directly to building permits. It'll get routed through planning to make sure that can, the proposed dwelling complies with setbacks and so on. But that, you pretty much go directly to building permits for a single family dwelling. As Kelly said, you would only go, get a, what we call a land use decision that can be appealed to planning commission. If you want to put the house in the setbacks and you need a variance, the variance would be a land use decision, right? And that would go up to planning commission. The difference here is if you want to take that single lot and divide it. That then becomes a land use decision that goes through the expedited process. But a single family dwelling on a single family lot generally doesn't require any land use review. It goes directly to building permits.
So if we're doing, again, you know, what the developers will be doing is taking a subdivision. And I would assume the first thing they're gonna say is we want to subdivide and partition all the lots. They're.
Yes, correct. They will do a subdivision first.
They would do, well, they would do a subdivision with requests for, for partitions in each lot, right?
No, you'd have to create the lot first.
You have to have the lot, it has to be a lawfully established lot in order for it to go through the expedited review process.
So you go, go through the current subdivision process that we already have in the code. And then after that, they'd come back through on each individual lot. So if they had a fifty lot subdivision, they would have fifty separate land division requests. If they were turning each one of them into several lots through the Senate bill.
And that's what Chris was saying, when we're reviewing those subdivisions, we need to think of them as though they could be a hundred and twenty, even though sixty lots, we gotta think like, uh, could end up to be a lot more.
So you're saying there's two approval processes there. They have to first get approved for the seventy five hundred foot lot subdivision. And then, then they can do it again with a sixty three day clock. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
First have to get your subdivision approved. If it's an R five zone, you can get thirty lots of five thousand square feet each. And then once that final plat is recorded and the lots are lawfully established, then you can come back. And on each one of those lots, you can get a duplex on each and divide it down the middle.
Okay.
Now, is there, is there a market for that? Somebody asked earlier whether there's a market for that. I don't know.
But depends, it depends on what the market's like in the next few years and who knows what those are gonna be. Uh, it's obviously something that we're not very happy with. Obviously, there's, uh, legislature put a number of controls on that. So that cities like us couldn't modify it to the place where they couldn't do that. But there must be some sort of in-between that we could say, um, maybe through setbacks, maybe through, uh, some other code that we have permission to be able to do. That would limit that or put in a, a requirement that would have to be, uh, limiting that, that particular piece of work. And admittedly, I'm, I'm really, it would be amazed if you had a developer come in with a sixty lot unit that said, we're gonna make all single family. And then about a week later, they come in with sixty, um, uh, decisions to make a hundred and twenty out of it. It just, it doesn't seem to be possible, but I could see us receiving a development that at least a large portion of that, or maybe a corner of it. Would be development into a duplex complex, which would be probably problematic for the rest of us. So is there some way we can look at these things to slow that down to limit that? And I know that the law itself has some tissues in it that stops us from doing it just out now. Couldn't, so the, no duplexes on single families.
Yeah, we had to let, so the hard part with that is that if we were to increase setbacks and everything else. We have to apply those also to, if somebody's just wanting to a single family home.
Right, right.
So it does have some, um, consequences essentially.
I guess like, in that respect, I, I know that the, the condition of counsel right now is probably not too very complimentary to this particular legislative decision. But my guess is that if we could put this on the backside of the planning commission to be able to look at that and find a way that this might be reduced. It may be even, uh, not a, uh, something that would be an advantage for a developer to do. So there's some way we could take a look.
Or incentivize. Look to incentivize the developer. We could, we could look to incentivize the developer into some sort of fashion where this would not be beneficial to them to do this. You know, whether it's through, we can get as creative as we want it, but you know, make it not worth their while or make it worth their while.
Well, let's, let's put it different. Let's make sure we build livable communities, right?
Sure.
Whatever that means.
Right, and, and so you just, you just incentivize the developer and there's lots of ways that we can do that. This is not a, this doesn't, this to me doesn't have to be a end all be all.
I guess that's why I like to put it on the back of the, uh, planning commission and that comes to us with some ideas that.
So this will be, so just keep in mind that independently, if you decide to adopt anything or not, as of July first. It has to be, it's apply, it applies. Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
Please do. Uh, Kathleen, I'm just gonna hand out, Jeremy had a quick question.
Sean has his.
Yeah, I, I know, uh, time, we're twenty minutes left or whatever. I know we can go beyond that, but staff has compared a whole nother slide deck that I would really like to see. Um, in respect, staff's time, because it looks really good and, and, and some of these things I think would be answered because I saw one drawing that you drew here. It's on this two things of. If it, if it's okay with everybody else.
Any further questions for Sean or can we move ahead with the staff presentation? Let's go ahead and do that.
Don, did you want to say something?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I've just, just kind of on the note about incentives, there's a few kind of provisions of statute and also previous ballot measures that have come forth. Um, especially for kind of property rights advocates that you guys should be aware of. As you guys think about developing incentives for, you know, getting the development outcomes you guys want to see. The first one is, um, the bill in subsection five, you know, it provides this, um, authorization for cities to regulate the site and design of middle housing. But they cannot, uh, discourage the development of middle housing through unreasonable cost or delay. Be, be aware of that. I mean, and we kind of outline kind of what that means in administrative rule in the context of middle housing. The, the other, I'd say, context to be aware of is something called measure forty nine, which, um, is if there is any, you know, proposal. That would limit already established uses on a property, um, say through like land use regulations or increasing, uh, the restrictions of land use regulations. So if you're like increasing setbacks or you're, you know, making more onerous development requirements, you actually have to do a few things. One, you have to send a notice to every individual property owner who's affected. And secondly, they actually have the ability to make a claim if they can demonstrate that their property value was lowered. So just keep that in the back of your mind.
We will. Thank you.
All right, so I will dive into the staff side, um. Share my screen. Right. So we're mostly looking at Senate Bill four fifty eight code amendments. There are nine code chapters that will have, um, changes proposed. The main goal is to build a code in compliance with Senate Bill four fifty eight. But we've also included housekeeping items, some clear and objective language, and then incorporation of plans specifically into the code. Uh, most of the clear and objective modifications are in chapter seventeen, one hundred, just subdivision chapter. Um, and then the incorporation of plans requires that we reference specific documents. So for example, the twenty eleven TSP, which means that the code will need to be updated every time a specific document is updated and adopted. So like when the twenty twenty two TSP is adopted, we'll need to be updating the code to reference that plan specifically at that time. Um, and then finally, the four residential, um, chapters seventeen, thirty four, thirty six, thirty eight and forty are purely just housekeeping and clear and objective. And they're, they don't have anything to do with Senate Bill four fifty eight. Um, so Sean's already gone over this, but I'll just kind of recap. It's a follow-up to House Bill two thousand and one. House Bill two thousand and one required medium-sized cities like Sandy to allow a duplex anywhere a single family is permitted. Um, and so any, any city or county that was subject to House Bill two thousand and one. With, uh, Senate Bill four fifty eight is then required to, um, adopt an expedited review for middle housing land divisions. So dividing that duplex then into two separate lots. The main intent is really just to enable the lots to be sold, um, individually and owned individually. It doesn't affect the quantity or the density of middle housing, House Bill two thousand and one did, but this one doesn't change any of that. So this is an example from Eugene, um, of a triplex. And so you can see outlined in black is what's referred to as the parent lot. So that's the, you know, the main lot that was created during the subdivision process or already exists. And, um, that would need to meet all the, all the standards, all the development standards, so setbacks and, um, everything like that. Uh, what Senate Bill four fifty eight, four fifty eight does is then allow, um, you to, to do a land division. So that each of those units is sort of a, it's a child lot, I guess, um, of that parent lot, and then it can be sold individually. But in terms of the development standards, um, it's still kind of treated as the triplex in this case. And I just kind of did a couple of quick drawings of duplex, um, showing a detached duplex and then, you know, the red line splitting it just for the purposes of individual, um, ownership and sale. And then, um, the other one is an attached situation. Um, I will note that it doesn't have to be split down the middle. Um, there is no size requirement. So it could be, one could be, you know, four thousand square feet and the other one, uh, three thousand five hundred or, you know, whatever. They don't have to be even.
On that, is there a minimum size?
I don't believe there is.
The one that's a thousand square feet, now there'd be five thousand.
It's, it's still have to meet setbacks and everything, so if you could get some prac, uh, potential like that, but I think practically it'd be very difficult.
Yeah.
Um, so looking at next steps, the planning commission meeting is on March twenty eighth. Um, planning commission will review the proposed code amendments and then forward a recommendation to council. The council hearings tentatively scheduled for May second. Um, and as Kelly already has said, the deadline for council to adopt these Senate Bill four fifty eight code changes is June thirtieth of this year. If we have not adopted it by then, then we will just go, use the bill directly, um, which will then, it will go into the Oregon state statute. Um, and we'll just process middle housing lot divisions through that. And as Sean mentions, a very, like, there's very prescriptive, so it's, um, really specific about how we send out the notice, um, how we process it. And then, uh, the appeals procedure is also very specific to this. So I was just gonna touch on the seven, um, seven discussion topics. So these are the more discretionary items. There aren't many, like I said, that are related to Senate Bill four fifty eight. So the first couple of slides in here will be related to Senate Bill four fifty eight. And then the remaining five are gonna be just, um, other, other kind of staff proposals that we wanted to get your feedback on. So I don't know if it would be best to just go through each one and talk about it, or if I go through all seven and then we kind of go back through them. Um, it's kind of up to you guys.
I, I just, I know this council, so why don't we go to seven and then be ready to jump among them, uh.
Okay.
Q and A.
Okay, so the first one's just some general middle housing, um, land division requirements of Senate Bill four fifty eight. Um, I believe these should be fairly straightforward. These are the things that Sean had mentioned that a city can do. Um, so the first is prohibiting further division of lots that result from middle housing land division. We are recommending that we do this, um, that we include this in our code. Otherwise, potentially, I think you could see, you know, division after division, um, to a degree. I mean, again, setbacks and all that would have to have been met, so it wouldn't be like infinite, but. Uh, and then, um, the second is that we could require notation on the final plat that indicates the approval was provided under Senate Bill four fifty eight. We're also recommending that we do that. It just makes it more clear for the future property owner. Um, and then third is, um. Uh, whether you want to require street furniture improvements where a lot or parcel bought the street. Um, or, and or right of way of dedication, if the original parcel didn't previously provide the dedication. Um, we would recommend requiring both. It would be really rare because that would typically happen, um, at the subdivision or duplex approval phase. Um, so I can't really imagine a situation, but I'm sure there might be some weird obscure one. Um, so we are recommending yes for all these three things, which we do have some control over. Uh, and then the second Senate Bill four fifty eight related topic, um, that's somewhat discretionary is that we do need to establish, uh, an application fee. For the expedited land division, middle housing land division, um, it needs to be set that we would, um, you know, get back the cost of processing it.
I'm breaking my own rule, Emily. I just got a note. Can that fee be whatever we want?
Um, I, I doubt it. I think it's, it needs to be, you know, I'll go to Sean.
Sean was just talking about unjustified fees.
So, okay, so it has to be justified, is that correct, Sean?
Uh, no, actually the statute specifies very specific dollar amounts.
Oh, I bet it does. Thank you.
So I didn't actually see dollar amounts. I just read that it needs to be set at a level calculated to recover the full cost of processing the application. Um, which could include going to the, um, appeals hearing officer.
Yeah, I, I suppose the, the dollar amounts are specifically related to the appeal. Somebody has to put forward a deposit that they, um, yeah.
Yeah.
If they, if they decide to appeal an application.
That's true.
I, I will say there is another statute that says that city planning fees have to be calculated at the actual or average cost to process the application or such application. So you'd have to figure out approximately what your costs are and you can build that as fees.
Give all our planning staff a big.
Yeah, sounds like a planning staff.
But now they're running double time, you know, a hundred and twenty to sixty three days.
Thousand dollars with burden staff rates is not much time. So I mean, my first thought was without even come close to covering actual costs, forget about inflating them.
Right.
Probably not.
Yeah.
Yeah, so so I guess this is something we could take some input on, but we will need to amend the fee schedule along with this. So just, you know, preliminarily, we were just thinking it's similar to a type two partition. So we were looking at that fee, which also includes a fee for the final plat review. But we can, we can discuss that, yes. So these next five topics are not related to Senate Bill four fifty eight. I think they're mostly in chapter seventeen one hundred. And there's just some of them are though, I guess, but um, these are kind of staff recommendations as we are going through those chapters, kind of trying to make everything clear and objective. And just kind of looking at different sections. So the first is that we are proposing to remove shared private drives and public access lanes from chapter seventeen one hundred. So they're both basically substandard streets and they they don't really result in desirable, you know, kind of layouts.
So that's. Can I plug on that one real fast?
Yeah.
This is actually one thing that will have a positive impact on density. So get rid of these. I hate them too, because they're just hard to regulate. So let's just get rid of them, and that way you're not increasing density through putting in these funky little private drives and access lines. So this is one thing that we can just take right out of the code, and that helps. I just want to put that in there.
Yes. Yeah.
So this next one is about the the newspaper notification. This is not legally required. It isn't our code, so we do it currently. But we are proposing to remove the requirement to publish the notice in the newspaper. So we do already, you know, send them to the people within the, you know, three hundred or five hundred foot radius posted on the website and other social media. And the the newspaper notification, I think it runs about like a hundred and fifty each each, you know, each post or whatever. So it does take up, you know, some some money. So I guess something to consider. The noticing distances, so we have kind of discovered or figured out that the title companies don't seem to be able to submit radius maps that exclude right of way. But our code does require the noticing distances. It writes, you know, writes it in as three hundred feet excluding right of way. So it seems like there might be a software limitation to take out the right of way and do that radius. So we were just thinking about removing that since it's not happening anyway. And then the question would be for the noticing different distances, would you want to increase them, knowing then that we're not really excluding the right of way? So, you know, the typical right of way is approximately fifty feet. And you have, you know, the three hundred foot noticing distance, and there's, you know, probably within that a street or so around each each side of the subject parcel. We could increase it to like three hundred and fifty feet to sort of, you know, get that same what we were going for with the radius without actually having to the title companies exclude the right of way since it seems like they can't do that. So essentially, this is just about whether you want to increase the noticing distances if we take out the excluding right of way phrase. Our next one is elevation of application types. So currently, the director has the discretion to elevate all application types to the highest level. But that's not clear and objective, so we have to kind of come up with something a little bit more specific. So that our current proposal is to require the elevation of all applications to the highest number, which just basically means if they come in with a type two, you know, design review, type two tree removal, and then a type three special variance, all of them would be elevated to type three. So that would be increased fees, and then it would be planning commission reviewing more more of those items. And then the last thing, which could generate a lot of discussion, I'm not sure, is we have significantly revised the subdivision criteria in chapter seventeen one hundred to be much more hopefully clear and objective. And so there's a lot more criteria listed, and they should be a lot more specific. But we are just like some feedback on whether there's something you think we've missed, or if there's additional criteria you want to see. So that's that's all of the topics. I can leave the slides up if you want, and we can kind of go back to them.
Yeah. All right, questions for Emily?
Do you want to start with one?
You want to go back to one? Let's go. But yeah, why don't we start at topic one and we'll kind of. Yeah. All right, topic one. Thumbs up on staff recommendations. Yep, that's where I'm at.
All right.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys. Yeah, planning commission, please weigh in as well. I apologize, everyone. Yeah, good. All right, topic number two.
Good.
I got a concern about that is I know that the plots would be identified, but by the time you get down two or three owners, you know, we don't really look at plots so much. We're looking at deeds and such. Is there a way we can put this on the deeds and attach them some way so we know we got to stop?
That is a, yeah, so you could, what I would like to do is put it on the plat. And then, but I think, but I think that's a fantastic idea. You could also put it as a yeah, something you would record that would pull up in a chain title with your deed.
Right, yeah, because a lot of times we won't look that at the plat.
That's an interesting point.
Change down.
Yeah.
So.
We can think of a way to work that in.
Yep.
All right.
I'm sad. And before we leave this, I mean, go back to earlier comment, it looks like under the last point in the the code that this gets to be set based off actual costs. So unless there is an actual fee schedule in the code, I recommend that you really look at that fee to see that we're recovering every cost because that just doesn't seem like a lot.
The the hard, yeah, no, I agree a hundred percent. The hard part with this one is that we haven't processed one of these yet. So I don't know how much time it'll take.
But so, and I think everyone needs to be aware, the code also requires that we review it within a year to then look at and revise it based off what we've learned. So I think you have to take your best guess, and we can always go down or up. Let's not be way under.
Okay. The only thing I would say though is councillor is that the. But. Twerk session. Okay, work session. Is that thousand dollars? Even if it was two thousand dollars, probably would deter these guys if they want to divide it up.
Literally thinking from a budget perspective, because we're taking on more work now.
Oh, yeah, right, right. In terms of our side of the world, but in terms of limiting, that's like, that's kind of how I was taking it.
They won't care, will they?
Yeah, that's the point. But we should, you're right about taking advantage of it for our own needs and our own staff.
All right, just can I just have one little thing to that? So when we're proposing our fee schedule changes, you will see a pretty substantial increase for partitions and subdivisions across the board.
Topic three.
I have a question on the public access lanes. Is that, you know, like I'm looking at like that penny lane area, you know, they've got, excuse me, vehicle, I guess it's extra fire access or something. I don't know, you know, but it's kind of going out to the common space, future trail area and stuff. And so are we talking just like vehicle access, fire truck access, or pedestrian access?
We'd be looking to remove private drives and public access lanes altogether. So the only way you could access a property is a road that meets the T S P standards, so at least the twenty eight feet of paved width and everything. The only other way is if you did have an access easement just to one other house. So there could be certain circumstances where two houses are coming off an easement, but you would you would get rid of this whole thing of like six houses potentially coming off one of these substandard streets.
I get that, but okay, so remember out of penny lane, you've got those lanes going out to under the power lines. Is that a public access lane?
Though, great question. So those are actually private drives when the code allowed of the six houses on a private drive.
Yeah.
But they're not accessing the houses. They're accessing the the B P A right of what you know what I'm talking about?
I guess I don't then.
If you're talking about pedestrian easements, we're not proposing to remove those at all. So our code would our code would require a bike bike pad easement through a block that's more than six hundred feet.
But they access the storm ponds, storm drainage retention ponds. That's what they're accessing.
Oh, so yeah, so that, I don't know without.
Yeah, you might want to make an exception to that as well, I'm saying, so things end up getting used as for this.
I think I know what you're talking about. I get what you're saying.
These though, these are all over the place.
So you're talking about like accesses to public stormwater ponds and stuff like that?
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good point. Yeah, we could add a clarifier in there.
And this is just moving ahead. This is a retrofitting.
Correct.
Current one is what, three houses on a private drive is the.
Two.
Two.
But then after we got rid of, once we went from six to two, then soon after that, we adopted these public access lanes, which basically are substandard streets as well. I just want to get rid of them.
Yeah, no, I want more getting rid of them completely. We've seen more. I was on planning council, just more heading around.
I agree. I agree a hundred percent.
Creates division in our community when it.
Planning Commission, how do y'all feel?
Okay. Topic four.
I think having it be our face, our city Facebook page should be a requirement.
How about social media? Because Facebook might not be around in three years. It may be something else we use.
Okay, but just put cities.
This should be in social media.
I'm I'm fine. I'm fine with getting rid of the newspaper.
I'm not.
You're not?
I'm not.
Really? That's really expensive.
I am.
Well, let me just, let me just make a case of something that I don't think we're you thinking about as part of this. Well, and that is, yeah, that that is is that, you know, Pam, Pamplin specifically, but local community papers are going out of business every day. To Kathleen's point at our last meeting, you know, that that really is a chronicle of our community, you know, history. And I just, I think that it's it's a small but important way, which has been brought up to me in the past by, you know, that publication, that this is a small but important way that we do, you know, contribute and help out our local community newspaper. So I just, before we just kind of willy nilly, just say, let's not do, you know, notices anymore. I just, there is, there is a community benefit to doing a newspaper.
Well, let's see, how much, how much Sandy community stuff is even in the Sandy Post anymore?
Not much.
Not much. Every time I open it, it's Hillsborough, Gresham.
And when you have to have a paywall to get to it, but I hear, I I hear what you're saying.
And I have the paywall, but it's still all aggression.
Well, what I see is that there is, the the best way to tell people that something's happening in your neighborhood is to get a letter. If you think about it, how many times have you seen a letter, and if you even opened it up, that there was a comment that you wanted to make? And that notice in the newspaper, there's some times you'd get four or five pages of notices, defaults, the rest of things, and they get lost. I'm not going to argue about the the.
I I just wanted to bring up a point that.
One of the commissioners has his hand raised as well.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, please. What commissioner? I didn't see it.
Christopher May.
Yeah, May, please, Chris.
I think I just want to go and give my opinion as well. I I'm going to show my age here for a minute. I still read the newspaper, and I believe social media is a vital part of our growth as a community, but I believe there's also a big part of our community that doesn't use it. Yeah, believe it or not, but I just want to say I go on and saying, I think we should continue doing the newspaper notification is my opinion.
How much are these ads, Kelly?
They run anywhere from about seventy to a hundred and fifty bucks. And then, and then it does take up probably at least an hour of staff time to generate each one of them. So you're probably looking at about anywhere between a hundred and fifty and two fifty to create one of these and send it. And then you got it. Then you got to correspond with the newspaper, pay the. So I mean, if we did keep it, what I'd really like to look at is exploring a way to add it to the fees for like developers.
Sure, absolutely. That's what they're.
But. Well, let's, why don't we do that? Why don't we look at that before we look at just not?
Yeah, they, and the only reason I didn't propose that is because sometimes like Joe, a homeowner, will have like a variance that costs seven hundred dollars, and it it would be very expensive for them to add another two hundred for the newspaper.
But when you're talking about putting it together, I mean, you're going to have to put it together whether it's online or goes to the paper, right? I mean, there's going to be some staff work to put together and notice no matter where it's going.
Some, it's just, yeah. Yeah, there there would be some overlap. Yeah.
We should recover that in the fee.
Yeah.
And does it have to be, you know, because some of those things go on for two paragraphs?
I know.
Can you just say they're available at City Hall and cut the cost if it's a simple homeowner type thing?
We would have to explore that with legal counsel.
You need enough information to be able to know what you're talking about, so that you don't kind of hide it.
I guess I look at it from a technical debt point of view too, like we only have so many staff members. And, you know, there's this extra hour or two or more that they're not actually trying to process through and and put the due diligence devices on the the process, you know, we are can have an abundance of staff.
Can I ask our legal counsel if he knows if any of the other communities that Burials or Hammond is representing, how many of those are still doing newspaper notices? If you know, even, I don't know if you know.
Well, I don't, yeah, I mean, anecdotally, some are, some aren't. Yeah, I my sense, yeah, I I don't know. And there there are some places that where the statute requires publication. But I think frankly, in if I had to guess, the larger jurisdictions are doing less and less notification. You know, to to publish in the Oregonians a lot more expensive than in, you know, the the Sandy paper. So I I think in the larger jurisdictions, we're moving away from publication notice.
I get a general publication notice of hey, go to our website to find all our notices. You know, that could be something that I don't know how much that would cost.
I I could explore that.
The staff time would be a lot less than then.
Yeah.
And I understand that everyone has, everybody going to the website, you're going to get a clear, more objective up to date if you make a mistake or someone made a mistake in in Facebook or something.
I can explore this one more.
Yeah, I really just wanted to echo what I was saying, the same thing that Jared just shared, which is all these little things we ask of the staff. I since I've been on planning mission, I am and how much our planning staff does, and all these little things eat eat away at their plan. So, yeah, we could do one notice a month or something that said, go to our website or, you know, whatever.
I think you got the gist of kind of the conversation overall, we're all at. Yeah, thank you, Haltz.
Top of five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So am I understood, Emily, is this, are you proposing, like, as I recall, there's like different distances depending on the proposal? And so are you just saying to increase it based on, you know, an average fifty foot right of way that might have been otherwise excluded? So it'd be like a hundred and fifty to three fifty to, or are we talking about increasing the noticing distances for, you know, projects, which I would.
I mean, it I guess it could be either this specifically is we were just saying, you know, in our code, it currently says excluding right of way, but we're just finding that that never happens. So we can't really like enforce it, I guess. So just, you know, to make it more clear, take out the excluding right of way. But if if we do that, then we're essentially kind of, you know, the intent of the code was to be the three hundred feet, but taking out the street. And in most cases, you're going to have a street somewhere in there on at least one of the sides of the property. So we're just saying you could, we could increase it to three fifty. You know, with the thousand foot noticing, there's probably going to be three or four streets, and maybe that goes up to twelve hundred, you know, I don't know, but just just a thought, I guess.
Planning Commission, since you guys deal with this kind of stuff a lot more than we do, any input from you guys on what is a reasonable distance?
Take it out and leave the number doesn't work. It's going to reduce the number.
Is it going to reduce the number? Because we can't get that number of the right of way in that anyways, so where we.
Bingo.
Yeah, so we were just doing it anyway. So it'd just be keeping it the same, basically, is what we've been noticing.
It's going to reflect what's actually happening.
Why?
Yeah. But I guess the one, the one point I will make is that, you know, for example, the high school development, you know, if you know where my house is, I'm pretty close to the high school. I did not get a notice on the high school because whatever it was, if it was three hundred feet, I'm four hundred feet or something like that. And I guess I would rather, you know, and I just when being involved with all the appeals that are done and stuff on subdivisions, it's really weird that, you know, some of the people in the subdivision find out about it, but the other people. And it certainly does affect their quality of life and stuff. So that's why I've kind of been pushing social media and things like that because and and having the city website list all the 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 planning stuff, which they've done a bang up wonderful job about really, you know, stepping up and getting that word out. And and I don't think it has to be anything really involved, but I, you know, when you have a big subdivision going in, it's, I think, helpful to kind of let the folks within a fairly, you know, in that neighborhood, which is more than three hundred feet usually know about it. So.
The only thing that's sad about this is you're going to let a bunch of people know about it, get upset about it, and then there's going to be absolutely nothing anyone can do about it.
Well, that's our intent.
My intent's transparency, right?
This is generic.
Yeah.
For all applications, not just.
Right, good point. Good point.
Yeah, and and if anything. Yeah, and, and if anything, I remember in my days on the planning commission is that there was some response back to, we didn't really get notices, why didn't we? And, uh, sometimes you're gonna think to yourself, well, who, who do you stop at? What do you stop at? You know, the development that you're working in, or do you go to the next development, the next, but pretty soon you got the entire city. But there are come, there is some logic that says that if you've got, uh, somebody gonna be driving by, somebody's gonna be using that area because they are adjacent to it, that should be notified of some kind. And, um, I can remember the times that I've been notified, most of it didn't really affect me very much, but I was glad to be able to hear it because I had a chance to talk to some neighbors and neighbors talked to each other, and pretty soon you had a decent idea of what's happening. So I, I'd rather go larger than smaller. I think three hundred is the limit now.
Yeah, so, yeah, Jordan asked a question that's really good. So the one hundred is the, the Senate Bill four or five eight, that's the only thing that would fall in that expedite, the land expedited. Yeah, we don't have that.
My property.
We don't have that.
A neighbor on each side.
We don't have that in our code right now. The three hundred is for type two, all type two. The five hundreds for all type three and type four, and the thousand foot is for all annexations.
So there you go.
There you go.
I think it'd be helpful to have all these on our city Facebook page.
It would be, right?
All the notices?
Yep.
Based off what you said in back in number four?
If we're sending it to some, some of the residents, I just think it's helpful, again, to just let people know what's going on. And, yeah, I'm sure, you know.
So just to clarify, on number four, that was for public hearing notices, so type twos, the three hundred foot or the one hundred foot, they wouldn't, they wouldn't fall under the type four noticing requirements.
That's fair.
Yeah, so the SB four fifty eight.
At your high school. That would not. Anything that, anything that goes to planning commissioner, city council, gets noticed right now in the paper. And therefore, with the new policy, you want to set it would be going on social media. But the, the ones that are getting the one hundred or three hundred foot notices, they, they would not automatically roll. Sometimes the three hundred foot notices, like something really basic, to be honest. Where I don't know if you'd want to be littering the Facebook account with all of those.
How many are there? There's quite a bit.
Yeah, type twos, that's like half of what we review.
Yeah, you don't wanna do that.
Well, that, a lot of that, like that in eighty user type one, but like, an example of a, a type two would be like, a small addition to like a commercial structure.
Yeah.
Could fall under the three hundred foot, and then also we're putting that on our Facebook. I don't know if we really want to do that or not.
I don't think we do, but that's just me. Takes away from, it's just kind of like the boy who cries wolf.
Well, it just, it just, it just makes it, if you start loading up, if you start front loading our social media, then nobody wants to look at it, right? It's, and then, and then you can't get information out to people, so. Unfollow, unfollow.
I think we keep it the same, in my opinion, is exclude this street right away, which is basically exactly what we're doing now.
This is minimal, minimum legal requirements. We've been administratively pushing more of these big applications. We definitely post.
Right.
These hearings on Facebook and subdivision, the, the monthly newsletter, the electronic newsletter. We have the online database of all the applications, so, you know, I, I know it's, it's not in the code, but, you know, we, we recognize when things are of community-wide concern, push that out.
Okay.
All right, move forward, topic six. Yep.
I, is this when there's a bunch of different things in one application?
You got it. And I practice has been to punt it all up, but we want to codify that, so, you know, if I'm not around, that, that stays the same.
All right.
Number seven. So, the thing, so here's kind of process where lies where, I have a question, because, you know, I've kind of been wanting some additional criteria, but kind of being told, oh, well, the comp plan, you know, that's where we'll do that. And the comp plans a little ways off, and these other housing studies and all this stuff, and, but with what we saw today earlier, I just feel like there's maybe some things that we wanna kind of change up a little bit to add in there. Or, you know, for, for the first thing, again, as I, as my little memo said, I would like to see us, uh, roll back that detached duplex proposal to make it attached duplexes like it was. And then, there's probably some additional criteria that, you know, I, I don't, you know, maybe increasing setbacks or, you know, I, I kind of have to think about, you know, what other, I'd, I'd like to talk to some folks about what are the things that we, and again, I'm not trying to, you know, get around anything, I'm just trying to kind of make sure that we have our balance maintained.
Wha- what, I'm just gonna, or, or later than it is, but Kathleen's brought it up a couple of times. I, 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 I honestly see it both ways on, on display. One is, is, it's gonna be, I think to Kathleen's point, it's a lot less of a marketable unit to turn around and sell, so it's a lot less when, when you don't detach it. So it's a lot less of a desirable deal for developer to come in.
I think that's a bigger discussion than for tonight, really.
Uh, uh, that's fine. The other is, is I feel like it's kind of a game of chicken. Right, it, if you're gonna get some of these developments that aren't appealing, is this a general topic that we want to take out? I mean, I'm not doing it tonight, but is this a general topic, as a council that we want to revisit?
I have several additions I was thinking about, so, just making the difference.
Okay, let's do it, but let's, some caution here, we have some very tight deadlines, in which case, some of these discussion points might be in the next edition.
Right.
And if I could have one thing, so I don't disagree with any of that, what I would do is move forward with what we've proposed for the majority, because then at least we'll have some added clear and objective and subdivision criteria in seventeen one hundred that we can apply. So that in the meantime, developers are not trying to skate around that. And then in the meantime, we can also continue to look at that chapter and other code sections to see what else we want to modify. But at least we'll have seventeen one hundred updated, so that, that takes care of some of the arguments we've been receiving from land use attorneys.
Okay, I agree.
Don? So in reviewing this proposed seventeen one hundred, I have a number of comments, and obviously it's not time to go through them all. Just mail them to you at this.
Please, yeah, just email them over, please.
I can mail mine too.
And that goes for everybody, yeah.
All right.
And we'll see this back to us, because we have to vote on this here. Planning first and then come to us or direct to us?
Yes.
So that's gonna take another month and a half to get through.
Yeah.
Remember all this in the whole scheme of getting it done before June thirty.
You probably won't see it again for a couple of months, yeah, that's true.
All right, any other questions or comments by any counselors or planning commission members before we adjourn the work session? All right, with that, thank you to staff for all of your work and preparation in tonight's meeting. Uh, you know, I, I, and again, you know, none, none of the attitudes displayed by any of us up here or whatever's towards any, you know, th- these decisions were made by state senators, representatives and governors, but we certainly are passionate about it, which makes all the sense in the world. So with that, we'll go ahead and close the work session and plan on convening our city council meeting at about seven twenty-five. Thank you. All right, well, let's go ahead and call this Sandy City Council meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I'll go ahead and start with the review of tonight's, uh, agenda. We, uh, will call for any changes to the agenda. We'll then go to public comment. Has there been any offered for tonight, Jeff?
No, Mayor, there's not.
Okay, uh, we'll then go to our consent agenda. That has our city council meeting minutes from February twenty-second. We'll do a presentation, which we're all looking forward to, to our new Sandy officer, Ryan Anderson, for his swearing in. We'll have a kickoff presentation for the comprehensive plan update, which I know we're also excited for. And then our new business guaranteed maximum price for package number three, existing wastewater treatment plan improvements. And then we'll round up the evening with the city manager and council and committee reports. Uh, with that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
As councillor Pizza.
Here.
Councillor Smallwood.
Here.
Councillor Sheldon.
Uh, excuse?
Okay, councillor Walker.
Here.
Councillor Exner.
Here.
Councillor Hokinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. Um, with that, is there any change, that suggested changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, uh, there was no public comment, and so we'll go to the consent agenda. Uh, is there discussion or do I have a motion?
Move that we accept them, as described.
Is there a second? Motion by councillor Exner, a second by councillor Hokinson, uh, to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nays. Motion carries. With that, we'll do our press swearing in for Officer Anderson. Sir Anderson, please, uh, join me up here.
If anyone wanna come take.
And, yeah, if you guys, family, if you guys wanna come take some.
Stand up here.
Wherever you'd like to be. From here.
Yeah, with background, would you like to join? Feel free.
Hi, Brian, uh, repeat after me. I, Ryan Anderson, do solemnly swear.
I, Ryan Anderson, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and laws therefore, and laws therefore. And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially, and faithfully, partially, that faithfully, honestly, and impartially, yeah, discharge the duties of a police officer. Disarm, sorry, it is me, discharge the duties of a police officer, discharge the duties of a police officer during my continuance therein, during my continuance therein, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability. So how we got, so how we got, congratulations. So, uh, if you guys would like to take any family pictures or anything, we can, we'll take a recess for a little bit, please feel free. Mass, no mass, are you guys wanting a picture directly?
What is a happy move?
Why don't you get one up, or you want to, why don't you get one with you in the picture too?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll decide somewhere here. Oh, closer up there.
There you go. And one more, hold on a second.
Oliver's being so good.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Have you been to Academy yet? Yeah. Not yet. All right. With that, let's go ahead and kick off our presentation for a comprehensive plan update.
Thank you, Mayor, um, check and see who is with us from three J.
Which, by the way, is super exciting that we're kicking this off. This is great. So you should have balloons.
Yeah, we should. This is a, as we've talked about, this is a big deal. It's been, um, a couple decades of uh, our old comprehensive plan, um, and as we've been talking about, at least in the last couple of years especially, is the need to update our comprehensive plan. Um, and we're finally at this point, um, uh, we've, you know, got to the point of, uh, the RFP and the council, council approving the contract, and tonight, um, our consultant lead is going to walk through sort of the process and, um, an overview and kind of the official kickoff, uh, to kind of explain the schedule going forward and what this, uh, major project will entail. So like the mayor said, it's, uh, it's exciting. We've reached this point and a lot of, a lot of work ahead of us, but, um, definitely a lot of good work. And appreciate the, the planning commissioners, uh, that are here too, in attendance online, uh, because, uh, they'll be involved as well, um, being a major planning project too. Uh, with that, I'll hand it off to you, Anice, and, um, I think you can probably share your screen.
Great, um, can everyone see that?
We can, and we can hear you. Welcome.
Perfect. We're good to go. Excellent. Um, well, thank you and good evening, um, council members and planning commission members who are joining us in person or via phone. I'm really, of course, excited to be here this evening to basically officially kick off this big project with you all. Um, and as was mentioned, the, uh, overview of this presentation, I'm really just providing, um, some basic information about our project objectives, some information about our schedule, uh, and all of the exciting things that are coming up in the next couple of months. Um, so, with that, uh, I will kick us off and just briefly remind us of what this, uh, of the project overview and some basic objectives of the comprehensive plan update. Um, so the very first project objective is, uh, developing a community-wide vision for the future of Sandy. Pretty exciting stuff, um, and this is where we're gonna be starting, and this is what I'll expand upon a little bit later in this presentation. The second objective is to really understand broadly how key trends, sorry, understand key trends and how the community has changed and will continue to change in the future. Um, and then third, update the Sandy comprehensive plan to reflect that community vision and prepare us for the future. Um, some, some fairly broad project objectives, uh, that we will certainly expand upon and get into the more granular level once we get to, uh, basically each phase of this work, which will be over the course of the next two years or year and a half or so. Um, so, um, quick note on our project team, I think we all came to you in early twenty twenty-two, I wanna say, um, and introduced ourselves, but just a little reminder of the project team and its composition. Um, so we have three J consulting that is leading this update. Uh, we also have Echo Northwest on our team that is leading the technical analysis and is also preparing your economic opportunities analysis that will be feeding in to the comprehensive plan. We have the Geos Institute on board, um, that does climate resiliency and natural hazard mitigation planning. Um, and then we also are working with Veritas Collaborations, um, who has some unique relationships with the Latino community in Sandy and Clackamas County, um, and will really help us in our communications and outreach programming. So a deep and wide bench. Um, our project schedule, my apologies, but the text on this, uh, slide is, is fairly small. Uh, but this is a graphic representation of the very large and complicated Gantt chart that your city staff has been working hard and finessing. Um, but essentially, uh, the, the, the main point of this project schedule is that, uh, between now and about end of summer, early fall, phase one of this work will be doing our community visioning and our goal setting. Um, while we're doing this, there will be quite a bit of work happening on in the background. Um, we are doing an assessment of cute current and future conditions. Um, so there's gonna be a lot of data collection and analysis of various topics that affect livability in Sandy. Um, this is also the time period at which the economic opportunities analysis will also be undergo, will be undergoing. Um, so there's a lot of work in the background as we do a lot of engagement and outreach through the community visioning portion of this work. Um, and then come early fall into probably about next spring, twenty twenty-three, is when we'll be launching into the comprehensive plan update. So that's where we'll be really talking about policy formulation, implementation strategies, and also developing the actual document itself. Um, and we are slated for adoption of the comprehensive plan by about next summer of twenty twenty-three. And so you'll see underneath, uh, those kind of big blobs of text. Um, we are scheduled for a number of community-wide events, um, and activities, many of which are not listed in this graphic uh, schedule, but, um, some key things to note is we will have a series of open houses. Um, the first one will be in the summer, but we'll have a, a series of them through the cop plan phase of this work, uh, in the fall and spring of next year. Um, we have some stakeholder workshops, we have continuous community advisory committee meetings. And then, of course, we have very regular city council and planning commission briefings throughout this entire process. Um, so first, uh, I would like.
We're, we have a quick question from Don Hokinson.
It is a quick question, but it's that summer engagement. It would be really cool if that coincided with Mountain Days. Or at least, uh, some sort of presence for community engagement at Mountain Days.
Yeah, great, uh, great note, and we are definitely planning on it.
I like your logo. I want a hat on there.
Great. Great, okay, we'll note it.
It's like if you get one.
Right, exactly.
And while I also want to congratulate you all for having recently approved your citizen advisory committee for this project. So we all know that all of these processes, they do need to create a shared sense of ownership among the Sandy community. So we're really excited to have a citizen advisory committee that represents a fairly broad cross section of community members. I think the roster is about 16 folks that represent a lot of different interests across the community. And this CAC will be meeting eight times throughout this process, so they will have quite a bit of work in front of them over the next year and a half. And a reminder about what our CAC will be doing as representation of the Sandy community. First and foremost, they'll be reviewing and commenting on all of the work products that come out of this process. They're really there to help guide public outreach and engagement efforts. This is really an exciting part of the work that the CAC will be doing alongside with the project team and staff. They will also act as liaisons to specific constituencies or interest groups. They will also help us encourage other community members to participate in the process. And ultimately, our CAC will act as champions of our envisioned Sandy 2050 process, which is the new tagline that you all agreed upon last time this came up in the agenda. All right, so Phase 1, developing, oops, sorry. Developing the Sandy 2050 vision, this is the exciting work and the fun work. The very first part of this process, as I had mentioned earlier, is visioning and it's community visioning and it's getting out there and having conversations with the community about what we love today and what we want to see in the future. So there are two kind of key components for this phase. The first is developing our communication and our outreach strategy. This guides public and stakeholder interactions with the intention of creating opportunities for discussion, for knowledge sharing and problem solving with community members. And the second component is the community vision that will also be informed by an understanding of key trends and guided by community values and preferences. So while we are reaching our community, we are also trying to understand what currently exists on the ground today and what should we be expecting in the future to help guide those conversations. Um, Phase 1, so community visioning is going to be very highly visible and very, sorry, someone else.
I'm just curious.
Great, I can't see every screen very well, so my apologies if I don't hear or see anything.
Oh, I talk loud. On the CAC.
Jordan.
Yeah, we could, we can provide you a list of names, but there was a, you know, we can, you know, talk a little bit about that process. There was an application process and that was vetted with the team as staff and planning commissioner and city counselor as part of that process.
But you know how we kind of vetted or, you know, we voted or whatever on the pool exploratory and all that stuff, is that going through the same process?
No, this is a project advisory committee that's essentially advising staff. Like attack, that's advising staff on this project.
Thanks, sorry to interrupt.
No worries, I'm glad we clarified that. And so going back to what this phase, this first phase will be, highly visible and interactive with the community. The purpose of all of the activities that I'm going to describe here in a moment is to really understand community desires, preferences and priorities about the future of Sandy. And the way we're going to work this into the comprehensive plan is we take these values that we hear through the various outreach activities and conversations we'll be having over the next couple of months. And we'll be synthesizing those into some broad themes that will constitute a vision statement for the Sandy comprehensive plan. And then I'll show probably later on in the process kind of how we work from visioning to comprehensive plan policy development and how we kind of make a parity between the two, the two key pieces of this work. And some of the key questions in that, that green box on the side there, those are just some basic questions that kind of frame what community visioning questions look and sound like. So we're really trying to focus on having conversations about, you know, where are we now, where are we going, where do we want to be? How do we get there? Who should be engaged and how do you want to be involved? So those are kind of the foundational questions for our outreach and engagement over the next couple of months. And so what are we doing? We're going to be doing a lot of things, there's going to be a lot of different activities kind of happening concurrently over the next couple of months. The first thing we are launching with our CAC when we meet them next week, our community conversations, which are essentially small group discussions or focus groups that anyone can host and report back on to any project team member or staff member. We're going to be encouraging our CAC and empowering them to host their own kind of focus group discussions or small group discussions with their own communities or groups or clubs or organizations or even neighbors and family and friends. So we're really hoping, sorry, we're really hoping that we will have all of our CAC members kind of help lift, help make the big lift in that regard. And we'll be having a number of community conversations with a variety of different groups and clubs and organizations in Sandy. The second thing is we'll be out and about at community events, including the Mountain Festival in July. But essentially, we will be setting up a booth at the farmer's market, the Mountain Festival and some other events that we're kind of starting to work on compiling now. And the booth is really kind of the opportunity to have some face to face interaction with city staff, get some information about this project, do some sort of interactive activity, whether it's a map based activity or an intercept survey. But it's really all about relationship building and being present at a variety of different events and really creating a lot of project awareness. At the same time, we also have an online survey that will launch moment or probably about the next week or so. We also have kind of a photo stream that we're going to build where folks, if they wish, they can submit a photo of their favorite place in Sandy and just, you know, kind of engage in that way via social media or another way. And so our hope is to just also collect a lot of imagery in addition to words about what we love about where we live and what we want to see in the future. And then fourth kind of key engagement activities and open house, this will likely be sometime in July and that's going to be an opportunity to basically report back out to the community, everything we heard from everyone over the last six months and kind of our process for synthesizing all of the feedback we heard and then presenting a draft vision statement out to the community based on that feedback. So that will probably run us through the next six months or so.
Anise, um, quick question, so the where people are thing is, I think, going to be interesting over the next six months to a year. No one really knows what the world's going to look like, right? Especially with people, just some people are more fearful than others. What are, are there plans on, you know, how, how, how are we thinking through how to engage community members who may not quite yet feel comfortable attending an in-person event or just, I'm sure you've been dealing with this for two years now, what are some of the things, you know, to think through to get everybody involved?
Yeah, great question, and so I think, I think it's, it's doing a lot of different things in a lot of different places at a lot of different times to get really a broad engagement. I would say the community conversations and really leaning on our CAC who represent, you know, some really great communities in Sandy itself to help lead these community conversations. And usually the way they, they often work is, you know, we might have someone that is on the PTA or, you know, has, has a regular standing meeting with a club or a group every month and they may ask to carve out some time on the agenda and then facilitate a small group discussion around some key questions that we help prepare for them. And then they basically collect the feedback for us, submit it to us and we kind of compile it with everything else we're getting at the same time. I would say the community conversations have still worked really well in a virtual setting just due to the nature that even, even though we're maybe not meeting face to face as much these days, things are still happening, people are still meeting virtually, and so those conversations still have had, have been quite powerful. And so I would say that that's really where, where we, we hear a lot of different voices. And so we've developed what we call community conversation kits and they're essentially like a meeting in a box where we provide them with all the materials, the information that they would need to host a group discussion, how to do it, you know, all the logistics involved to really just empower folks to just download the kit, you know, facilitate the discussion, take the notes and then submit them to us. And it can really be with any sort of group where, you know, your neighbors or your family and friends. So we're really, really gearing that kit to be used widely and in a variety of different settings. Any other questions?
Yeah, there, okay, let me just go. There's a number of folks who are in the city who are really are understanding of the process of a cop plan and understand the city very well. And there are many people who have opinions that may not be as informed as others. How do you plan to balance that out and look at those kind of things? For example, the planning commission is probably one of the most involved in understanding of a lot of the things that are going on. How would you balance that against it? I don't want to disparage anybody, but.
Somebody like me.
Someone like Don, who is, no. How do you, how do you balance that? How would you planning on balancing that out?
Yeah, that's a great question, and so we are certainly relying on planning commission and city council to be kind of our sounding board. So we've built in a number of different, a number of briefings with you all at key points in the process. And this is really our opportunity for us as a project team to come to you and be like, hey, you know, this is, this is what we've heard and this is what we've done with what we've heard. Like, are we on the right track? You know, what, you know, what, what have we missed? Is there anything else? So we're really looking to planning commission and city council to be our sounding board in that manner. But then also understanding that there are a lot of different levels of understanding and knowledge across all sorts of communities, you know, whether it's, it's employees, you know, whether it's staff or whoever, there's a lot of different levels of expert or areas of expertise. And so we're going to be making sure that we engage those various stakeholders in different ways. So we do have a couple of stakeholder workshops that will consist of various city staff and departments and folks that are knowledgeable about key issues. So we're really trying to balance kind of the, the broader community outreach with a lot of focused engagement with area, with folks that provide areas of expertise in particular topic areas. I think we'll be seeing a lot more of that in the cop plan phase of the work when we're actually digging down to the goals and the policies and the implementation strategies. So that's yet, yet another kind of avenue for, for balancing the, the various levels and scales of feedback we'll probably receive.
So we have a, a lot of folks that live in Sandy, 97055, but do not live in the city limits or even anywhere really close, even in our UGB or UGR. They all have strong opinions about Sandy though and what's right and what's wrong about it and, and so how do you like sort of the Don's question, how do you kind of ensure that the folks that are, you know, at least within our UGB are weighted, you know, with more credibility or whatever you want to use than the folks, you know, as Decatur Welch's and things like that.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, and I'll say, you know, um, a lot of our, kind of the promotion of the activities and things we're going to be doing will certainly be centered on City of Sandy community members. I, you know, I know, for example, that we are going to send out a mailer pretty soon and we will be kind of using addresses within city limits. So we're really, you know, kind of making a concerted effort in that way. I, you know, we certainly aren't, aren't in any position to filter who comes up to our booth at a farmer's market. But we, you know, we'll certainly do our best and we're really going to make a concerted effort to promote the process and the project and its activities to the city of, to City of Sandy community members. And I think that really does come down to, to the avenues of communication that we rely on, which will, you know, primarily be social media and the newsletter and the Sandy Speaks website, but then also mailers that are certainly a lot more constricted geographically. But if you have any ideas or kind of guidance or thoughts to provide us on that topic, I know that we probably, you know, we would, we'd be certainly open to, to hearing any additional ideas.
Mayor, I just wanted to, so Sandy Speaks, the new public engagement website that we'll be using heavily for this. When you register as a user, you record that you do live in the City of Sandy, you have to provide which section of the city that you live in. So we, so that's another way to sort of.
But not, not through like an actual address, but you are.
No, but you're. Which quadrant of the city that you live in.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, there are people who have businesses in the city but don't live in the city.
That's true, and that's an option as well.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that, I, I forgot that the Sandy Speaks has that automatic filter.
I think it's important to, you know, that all the folks that are in the UGB that have the potential to be annexed in under this plan should be able to, you know, have some opinions about.
Does it incorporate the UGB?
I'll have to look at it, but yeah, councillor Walker, we shared this exact same concern as you is that we want to hear from everybody, but we did want to somehow try to weight it to the people that are actually constituents. So we're going to continue to try to work on ideas on how to resolve that. We, we had the same thing we were talking about last week, I believe.
Constituents meaning live here and business.
Residents and business owners, yes. So up on the screen, I do just have a couple of kind of broad key questions for you all for discussion and happy to chat through any ideas as we, you know, kick off this project. Do know that we will be back in front of you probably in a couple of months to report back on, but sorry, to report back to you all on, you know, what we've done, kind of where, you know, what we started hearing and, and just a little update on our outreach and engagement work that we've been doing. But in the meantime, I did, you know, want to, want to hear from council members and city and planning commission members to the extent, you know, of the activities that I kind of described. If there are additional ways or particular ways in which you would like to be involved in this process beyond, you know, these, these regular briefings. Also, if there are key things that you feel would make this project a success, definitely things that would be good to know. And then of course, lastly, if there are any specific people or groups or communities that you really want to make sure we as a team contact to ensure, to make sure that this is an inclusive process. We are also open to, to hearing that feedback as well.
All right, first on us, how much do you guys want to get involved?
I'm going to be involved, yeah.
Well, I would hope that you guys all sign up for the same speaks. I would hope that everybody sitting on, sitting here does and participates on that, that would be great.
And I like the idea of being able to.
Know and it's all committee, it's only committee members.
I like the idea of taking those, those committee things and putting them into groups, I think. I will, I just thinking to myself, I can think of a couple of groups that I would like to be kind of developing and, and making comments through, so I think that's a pretty good idea, I like that.
I like what you said, Mayor, about downloading that kit and.
Always doing it.
And just, you know, get to know your neighbors again. Mask will come off here soon and we can actually, you know, have a party or something.
Right? I mean, as far as number two goes, what would make this project a success for me? It's just the community really engages and takes ownership over the, the cop plan process, you know, and, and really believes that we're part of it and that we, you know, collectively come together, kind of this futuristic vision. Victory to me.
I think, you know, COVID has really hindered a lot of the ways we used to do things, so we don't do it the same way, we won't do it the same way. But to get back into what I thought was always successful going back, I don't know, 18 years ago, I mean, just way back in time, you know, getting together in a room where no one is fighting over anything and just kind of collectively brainstorming and putting things up on a wall and, and seeing a community engaged together. Whatever the outcome is and of that, I think would be a success because back to your saying, being engaged and brought forth and having a community get to decide, even though we have the state telling us what we can and can't do. But at least we try to, you know, put that together to make this the best place that we believe is best place to live, where we play.
Well, I really am, I'm probably one of a handful of people, probably Jerry and, I don't know if Jeremy was there or not, 25 years ago, involved in the 2040 planning.
Hold on, Shadow Council.
But I mean, I was involved in all the meetings that they had and very involved and I'm really thrilled to have you all on board doing this again. But I mean, I was involved in all the meetings that they had and very involved. And I'm really thrilled to have you all on board doing this again. I think we've all learned a lot going from our first cop plan to to now as to what works, what doesn't. I think. So I plan to be very involved. And as far as what makes it a success, I think one of the things that we saw that didn't work very well was we kind of the way the whole cop twenty forty cop plan kind of got rolled out was they would kind of show us these pictures of something look like Fairview Village with all the window flower hanging baskets and everything, cutesy arts and craftsy and, oh, my goodness, bungalows. And then, you know, they'd say, kind of, would you like this? Or would you like this urban sprawl of every house looking the same? And of course, everybody said, well, definitely that, you know. But what we found out when we picked that was that we didn't, you know, that they were very much smaller lots than we were used to, and we didn't really have the ability to make sure that all the developers hung up all the flowers and and, you know, we, it took us years to kind of get the code to catch up to how houses actually look when they're on, you know, higher densities and all, to make them look a little bit nicer than just, you know, crackerback jackboxes, you know, willy nilly. So I'm really excited about kind of, you know, using all the things that we learned from the last process and then trying to kind of build on that going forward.
Yep. I, I think it's going to be, I think, one of the hardest challenges, I think, for this effort to really overcome is the fact that the state has become self prescriptive on so many things. And it would be a mistake, I think, to fall into a trap of feeling powerless to affect change. So the even within the state restrictions, changes and direction can be set will have a meaningful impact on the community for a long time. And I think we have to, our own message has to stay consistent. This is an opportunity to to direct as opposed to a victim of Salem.
I think the the success for me would be the, and I think you've got some of it captured here is it's not just the people who are technically very understanding of the process and understanding of what they would like to have, but there are the right brain types of folks who have more of that arts kind of a background or at least some sort of understanding of what makes it feel emotional or makes it feel good to be able to live in Sandy as much as it is, how technically we are correct and whether we've responded to the state or not, I not exactly is. Happy about that myself, but I think it's important that we get all the different groups. And I appreciate the the community meetings and things like that that you're planning on doing. So that would be a good one for me.
Yeah, I agree. Just groups, young, senior, you know, all walks life. I know I was young in the last plan that I really enjoyed participating in it. So.
Are we on number three there?
Yeah.
I think it would be good to have one of the groups be juniors and seniors at the high school. I would love to see that because guess what? In twenty years, they're here, right? They're who I was, or, you know, who you, you know, it's just. And as they get to see, I know when I left and went away to school and back in there, you know, ninety one, ninety two, you know, man, this podunk town, you know, kind of like this wasn't anything there. And as a high school, you know, you want to see the world. What? You come back and you realize, oh, the town changed a little bit. It's, this is actually amazing to be here, right? Like, so.
You can tell if you start now on a pedestrian sidewalk, by the time you're our age.
By the time you have kids and you can walk them with your stroller down that sidewalk, because that's how long it took. So you know, but having that, you know, maybe a junior, senior class, I mean, we used to have Berkey, you know, and have the Shadow Council, and then after him, Fred Drosko. Drosko went for a while, you know, you don't have that, but if there's, you know, any type of things that work with them to extra credit, or maybe we can get into there and show them, you know. So whatever it may be, leadership, whatever it is. We've had some groups in the past come and present to us here in the short past, a couple of years ago. But anyway, just, I think it'd be wise to have that.
All right.
I will say that your Citizen Advisory Committee does have a high school student on the committee, which is really exciting, and we are hoping to host a community conversation with an AP history class or a civics class, or, you know, some sort of club at the high school as well. So youth engagement is definitely woven throughout all of this work that we'll be doing.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate. This is great. We're very excited.
Thank you so much for having me this evening.
Back to you soon.
Thanks, Ennis.
Key point is gone, is that?
Yeah, I don't think they currently have a key club at the high school. What's that?
Lack of a sponsor.
They were there. They were there for the fourth session.
Oh, well, maybe, maybe I'm mistaken.
When I was in high school, I thought the key club was done by Berkey. It's his own.
Oh, no, that weirded me out too.
And I was like, well, it's his club, you know, and I didn't realize this.
And I was on the district board for key club.
Maybe it was just him. He wanted to keep feeling.
What's that? What's that? There's a song reminiscing?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
All right. And the new bit, well, you don't want to get to the wastewater conversation.
Hey, they.
Come on now.
Come on now.
No doubt. Have a good night.
All right. So under new, let's go to new business guaranteed maximum price. Package number three, existing wastewater treatment plant improvements coming in very below budget, I'm sure.
I saw it. I'm racing with the other one.
Yeah.
Jenny Coker, Public Works Structors, joining me here. Council, this is the third and final GMP, GMP number three with Slayton Construction for our improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. Similar story as to the other GMPs that have been approved so far is that we are seeing cost escalations and Jenny can go in that a little bit for the detail. I think Rob's also watching as well, needs to chime in, but this is our third, like I said, our third and final package is part of the contract. You recall, we broke them into threes. One of the major reasons that this type of contracting is beneficial for this project is through the CMGC process, we have the contractor on board that can then get the subs going and actually make these, these orders, especially with the supply chain order issues that we've been experiencing over the last year. We've done a number of early work packages with each GMP, especially on two and three, to put in orders in advance. And so the total number for GMP three is around four point five million. But we've done a couple big procurements in advance in to get some of these equipments, equipment and machines and filters in the process, especially with just raw materials like steel and things like that. This brings a total cost, I think, to ten point five million for the project. And we're still on a schedule to have the entire package complete by December twenty twenty two, so the end of this year. You know, we'll continue to watch that schedule really carefully and working with the the contractor, but supply chain issues and those shortages still remain to be an issue. But that's going to have been adjusted as a new call. Six months ago or so, we had to revamp the schedule based on the realities that we were seeing. So Jenny, anything to add in terms of maybe actual things that we're getting out of the three point five million here?
Sure. Thank you. I good evening, everyone. I, I think you gave great context for it. So this is the third and final package of the Phase One A improvements. And there's three major components that these, this project will address. There's a new tertiary treatment train consisting of UV and filtration. These, this will be really critical for increasing plant's capacity. There's really a bottleneck right now getting through the filters. So this will help with TSS as well. It's disinfection and flow. There's a second piece, rehabilitation of the aerated sludge storage basin. These will address solids treatment process deficiencies, ammonia, and improve site safety and solids de-watering and performance, which will it will save money in operation and maintenance costs moving forward and site improvements to increase site lighting for health and safety of the plants and also their ability to operate things in the dark. As Jordan alluded to, we're, we're very lucky that we have alternative delivery. The team has just been incredible managing risks. Jordan has signed three early work packages for this. There's two. There's three. Yeah, there was, there was one for the disc filter, one for the UV pumps and early work package seven for precast pipe material and procurement. And so by doing this, we've been able to place these orders ahead of the inflation we're seeing. So while this, the this total last package, as we said, is four point four nine million, we've already approved three early work packages totaling nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. So this authorization we're recommending tonight is for the balance of the three point three point five million.
I would, I would just, you know, we, we vetted this with the Oversight Committee last week.
Every day we wait, it just gets.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly. I was going to say here, the interesting thing, it's actually accelerating, which is scary. And Jenny has some shared some information about pavement and other escalations, but, you know, ninety percent design, which was last month, that we got that estimate from.
No.
It wasn't long ago.
It wasn't December.
I was reading through that.
Yeah.
The original design engineer's estimate in March twenty one for these improvements was approximately two point three million. And then.
December twenty one was three point five. So.
From, so year over year, year over year, it essentially doubled, but there's there's, there's a bit more to the story. I this is a very old treatment plant, and I kind of equate it to remodeling a really old house that hasn't had any maintenance done to it in a couple of decades. The team has really tried to contain the scope of these improvements, but it's sort of the equivalent of remodeling a bathroom. You think you're just yanking out a tub and you get there and the floor is rotten and, you know, the electrical is outdated. So that's kind of what's happening. There are some adders. They did some potholing. They found some like a RAS pipe in particular that they just couldn't connect to. It was the condition was very poor. So there, there have been some, some, some items that were not included last year, but there was really not nothing that could have been done.
So it's, it's cost increasing and scope had to grow because of the age.
That's, that's, that's exactly right. And then, as everyone knows, we're in a very unusual, high inflationary environment.
So so Jordan, I mean, how are we on our rate analysis?
So it's a great question, Mayor. So we have a, a meeting on Thursday with the Oversight Committee. We're working with our rate consultants right now on updating the, the rate study. And Jenny has been working hard in the last couple of weeks, actually since she started, or maybe even before diving into the numbers on what our previous estimates are for this project to rightsize them and be a little more realistic based on what actual costs have come in on recent projects like MBR plants and other things. So we, we will, we'll be in front of the council soon to give an update, a bigger update on where we're looking at with the project cost estimate and also the rate studies and maybe start talking about, you know, the project scope in general, too. We're still working through those things and, and we're aiming to to have at least some information to share with the Oversight Committee this week and then come back to the council based on. You know, so but this, yeah, I mean, it's, it's changing in front of our eyes, basically, these costs.
And I, I'd like to, I'd like to emphasize we also have two different levels of oversight. First of all, the design engineer, West Yost, is reviewing these estimates in detail. So that's one level of oversight. And then Leeway Engineering Solutions, our owner's rep, is also reviewing them. So there's been general consensus that, you know, these are legitimate escalations.
So we'd like to say that I appreciate the team that's been helping us to get through these things as quickly as possible. My guess is that if we had almost eight percent inflation this past year, who knows what the silly thing is going to be this upcoming year. I just paid four dollars and twenty cents a gallon for my gas. You can imagine what that means.
That's cheap. Yesterday.
It still choked me and I almost, I paid sixty five dollars for a tank of gas. I just, I've never.
Church of vehicles.
So you rode a bike here.
Okay. So anyway, we're trying very hard to move forward as fast as possible, knowing that there could be more inflationary expenses come along. So that's really been one of the things I've been impressed by moving forward so fast. The other thing that I've really been pleased with is the number of violations that we have almost stopped. We had two in January, none in February. Of course, that was kind of a dry month for us, but January had quite a bit of rain and precipitation. So I'm really pleased to see the number going down. And I think it was fairly minimal in November, December.
On December, yeah.
What the number was, but certainly the stuff that we've been doing on the upper part of the city, the basins have been, it's obvious to me that they've been effective at reducing the number of violations. I just really look forward to seeing the next two or three years where the basins, two at a time, trying to make that stuff happen. It is a obvious that we're making progress.
I had a little just caution or just for us as we look forward. This is the final of what was planned. But we still have an old wastewater treatment plant and not everything replaced. And so one of the things Jenny's working on is with Bill and others is to come up with a good condition assessment of what we have left. Make sure we get that into an asset management plan so we can start budgeting for those things that are going to be just perpetually coming.
That's great.
All right.
Move ahead before it goes up any more.
Yeah, let's do it.
I'm worried. We. I moved to accept the guaranteed maximum price proposal from Slayton Construction for GMP number three improvements at the existing wastewater treatment plant at the amount of three point three million, five hundred fifty four thousand thirty seven dollars and authorize city manager to sign an agreement for GMP three improvements.
I just want to have two percent of why you said that. Sorry, it took me so long. There's a motion by councillor Pete Soul, the second by councillor Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nays. Motion carries. Thank you. I thank you, staff and everybody for your work on that. Appreciate it. All right. Report from our city manager, Jordan.
Well, a really short one tonight. Just want to, first of all, thank you for Saturday. Great conversation with council. Staff really appreciated the, you know, the part of that. See what for us to on community campus, another major goal. So thank you. That was very nice. March twenty first is spring break. This was brought up by a couple of council, council members. We can, I think we can clear the docket on that one. A couple of things have been moved out a meeting or two or more. So if there isn't just by the council to take the twenty first off, I think we can probably do that. And, you know, I could talk to the mayor later about we want to do that or not, but just proposing that. Couple of administrative updates, the statements of economic interest, I think, are open up March fifteenth and close April fifteenth. So.
I tried to do it and realized I couldn't do it.
Couldn't do it yet. Yeah, yeah. So it's not until March fifteenth, I think. So.
They usually send a few.
They'll send a few reminders.
You haven't done it yet.
Yep, yep. Don't want to get you in trouble. And then just, I know you have some interest in administrative stuff that's coming up that you want to know about. Police bargaining will be taking place this year between now and summertime. So we expect that to kick off relatively soon here.
Is that a two year contract?
It's a three year.
Three year.
I remember it took a little while.
Yeah.
Last time. So that's why it seems like we were just here. And then we're also negotiating with our transit contractor. That's also a three year, but with every year, there's an opener for price changes. So we're in the middle of negotiating that. We may have an update for you relatively soon on how that's going. County is also involved with that with the Mount Hood Express. You know, that we, we manage the administrative side of that. So a couple of things that, you know, just may be coming up over the next few months. And that's it.
Thank you, George. Don?
Well, thanks. Thanks, everybody, for the community campus discussion, you know, yes. Yesterday, that was a long, it was a long discussion and it wouldn't have fit in an hour work session. So that was, appreciate your time on that. And to that end, Mayor, we've asked before, but I'm going to ask again to rename the aquatics committee or reappoint one for the community campus. Because it doesn't fit the scope that we're operating under right now. So if you feel so, I don't let staff know.
Yeah, well, yeah, let's talk, let's talk. I just, I got to figure out exactly where we're at, what you're asking.
So in that presentation that So in that presentation that, uh, that Rochelle put out there with the tack, there was a committee on top of it. And the three of us assumed we're on. But it's currently titled the aquatics. Yeah, if you agree, you just gotta say the word, she'll make it happen.
Well, with the current membership or with new members? Because right now it's a very aquatic center.
If you, this is the three of us. If you keep the three of us on it, you just change the name. If you want to create a new.
Oh, no, then just change the name. I just making sure we were getting aquatic community members. Not, not to say that some of those wouldn't work. I, I just.
Yeah, yeah. That's one. Uh, second, as far as the vision statement, thank you for some of the ideas that were sent. Fill out the rest of them or type me some notes. Just tell me, you know, what you'd like to see and I'll try to come up with some drafts on that for next. That is. And lastly, in that meeting, uh, was mentioned that the resource officer contract may be coming up for negotiations. Time of this year as the B T S D liaison, if it's appropriate, I would like to be involved in some of those discussions at least. I don't know if it's appropriate.
Oh, it, for, for the, the union, Steph, I don't think it would be appropriate. And cause we're not, we're not going over the, the resource officer stuff and I think.
The SRO program.
The SRO is budget though. This is, you're, where are you talking for budgeting? Are you talking for the union negotiation?
The school resource officer.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you should be part of that. Yeah.
It's okay. It's okay. There's a lot, there's a lot going on.
Cool, thanks.
All right, appreciate that, Carl.
It's all right. I noticed that Ernie stood up to the, don't go away, Ernie. This, this will be relatively light. It won't be too heavy, but I do want to ask you. I made the mistake of getting a little involved in some homeless and some difficulties with some of our parks and how that has going. And I certainly got a lot more than I had ever imagined I would be. It's on the people's minds about how this is, you know, working through. And I've had a chance to talk with councillor Smallwood a little bit about how that task force is going and I appreciate the work there. But I have noticed that a number of the comments that have come through to me are about some of the homeless folks that are camping. Looks like camping. I've been in Mining Park now a couple of times and I see that they've kind of set up shop in the stage there. How, how long do we need to let that happen? And I'm wondering about the. How do I say the diplomatically, the condition of the stage looks like it's starting to decline a little bit. And, and on top of that, I noticed there were some tire skid marks in the, another part of the park, the same mining park. What's the status of that group? And it's, and in terms of the context is that some of the mothers I've been talking to are. More than a little bit concerned about how that has stayed there for quite some time and how that might. Uh, worry those folks who are using the fantasy forest and kids wandering around and that kind of thing. So, are, are we, I, I know there's some limitations of how much we can move them around, but I guess the question is.
Well, I can't camp in the park. Don't have any limitations on that, so. And that person, which I've been, that is, we've contacted him, is very resistant to services. So it's one of those, you know, it's just one of these ones that we have, it's, it's, we have a hard time with because the person doesn't want the services that we have to offer. Um, he's moving in the evening and we're trying to get him in another place. So, um, he's generally, um, not a resistant, like he's, he's caught, but. Doesn't cause a bunch of problems for police. I mean, other than what he's doing, which is a problem. But, um, he, he isn't, he doesn't, he doesn't resist us or he doesn't, he's not, uh, he just doesn't want those services. So. Officer Argu Bright's been working with him on trying to get him another place. He's one of our people that is a chronic, uh, homeless person here, so. It's a little difficult in that regard, but he doesn't spend the night there. Since the guys, they walked through the park today. And, uh, he moves in the evening. He knows he can't stay in the park at night. Thing he does is come back in the morning and. Sets up his stuff.
Yeah, I don't do it the day in the evening, but I noticed now several times walking through the park, I see that it looks like the same individual. It is like it is.
Yeah, it is.
So he sets up a tent?
Well, he's got some camping stuff there. Yeah, it's, and there's some of it is basically garbage. And, uh, but the tent's not really being set up. He has, he has a tent with him, but he doesn't set up a tent. Not that I've seen enough that the guys told me. But he does have his camping equipment there with him. And then he moves along in the evening because he knows that he can't stay the night there.
Does he move all his stuff along with him in the evening?
There were definitely camping gear, cooking gear. Cooking trash and just comes concerned that the people I've been talking to seem to be really concerned about it. There's been some scares. I guess he's got some characteristics that don't make it easy for a mother with little children to feel comfortable with. I don't think there's been any, that I'm aware of any interaction. You probably know more about it than I do, in terms of physical violence or anything.
But I can see where those, why those, they'd have those concerns.
Yeah, and the other thing is, is there, I noticed that today that there were some skid marks from vehicle tracks.
Inside of the park?
In, in the upper end of, up there about the location of the toilets. Looks like somebody skidded around.
On the path right there?
Just off the path. I don't even, might, might even have been something that the city did, but I can't believe that would have done that. It wasn't done, it was skid marks.
There might have been somebody driving there.
They were doing work last week.
Uh, these were skid marks. So anyway, there's something to keep up. Then lastly, Ernie, you're off the hook now. But Rochelle, wherever you are, if you're listening, I noticed that the park is starting to look kind of dingy and there are lots of things. That probably could be cleaned up. And I know we're talking about the mountain festival coming in here in next, you know, in July sometime. It'd be really good to see that starting to be cleaned up. Love to see that. I see a lot of stuff on the park, the trails and so on.
Yeah, she, they, uh, parked stop and Rochelle walked it with the mountain festival folks too. Kind of get a punch list of things.
The honeymoon is over.
That's it. Thank you, Carl.
I don't have too much. I just, um, I am anxious to be involved in the comp plan and stuff. Cause I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of what, what's involved, so, um, yeah, excited about that. And, and I'm also excited about this, you know, community campus and where we're headed with that. Appreciate, uh, having Rochelle and Jenny on board and I think we made some really, Jordan made some really good selections there. And we, you know, we should feel pretty lucky, so.
Next, I, I don't really have anything to re- report purposes meeting this week on Wednesday, but I did have a question for you, Jordan. Where are we, um, with the mask mandate dropping and kind of hopefully coming to the end of. Life as we've known it for the last couple of years, where are we with having everything, all the city-run programs and everything? Back up and running, kind of back to business as usual.
Normal office hours, all that stuff.
Where are we at there?
Be to let me office.
Yeah, I think we're, I mean, we're. We're essentially running normally. You know, we've started adding programs back to the community center. We're, we're recruiting positions or interviewing positions for that. Got a number of programs are now back there. Teen programs, kid programs, senior programs, that's starting to ramp up even more. Like, on Saturday, we have a number of special events that are planned. Library is doing programming again. Mask mandate's done in a few days and, you know, we'll, we'll follow that. So we're not requiring, you know, masks after, after that point. As far as hours, um, you know, it's, we can talk more if there's really a strong interest from council for us to be open till five. Right now, city hall is, is closed at four and really that's more, more of a staffing challenge of keeping folks at the desk. But also allow them to have work time that's not staffing the desk. We actually weren't getting a lot of foot traffic after that time. I think after two years of people just getting used to. So I, I think staff have kind of responded to all of that. Otherwise, we're at normal hours and normal operations. Of course, we'll be able to facilitate more in-person meetings if people want that. That's been an option. You just have to wear a mask. But I think people are probably gonna want to do it more and more now that you don't have to wear a mask when you're inside the building. So if there's any more specifics, happy to.
No, it's just for my own curiosity, curiosity is, you know, people ask me questions and various things.
Well, just as a follow-up, I guess, I'm sorry, just as a follow-up to that. I, I'm just curious, because I know like, the office place that I'm in, some of us are back. Some are still very much in like a hybrid type format, like how are we just in? We don't know, right? Just how are we in staffing and what, what is kind of the marching orders that we're operating under right now?
So about it, once we reopen city facilities, um, we've made this adjustment and now we're gonna be fully making this adjustment. We've kind of been in this middle ground, a hybrid, I know, a hybrid. Of going from sort of the informal, if people need to work from home, we, we need to not have so many people in the building at one time and all that. I'm thinking more of city hall because staff are back at the library and other facilities. But, um, now we're, we've shifted more to the telework agreements. So, uh, we're, you know, with the approval of the manager, you can work from home a day a week or something like that. Honestly, it's, it's a beneficial, like it's one, it's a, it's a perk. Like people, when you're recruiting, people are. They want that work flexibility where I need dedicated time at home versus being in the office for that sort of synergy and cooperation. So it's, it's a recruitment tool, tool that we like to use. But we also recognize the benefit of having people in the building and getting back to in-person water cooler chats. And all that, like, I think we all see the productivity gains that we get from that. The other challenge that we have here is as we continue to add bodies, which we're gonna be looking at, especially at public works and city hall, we don't have the space. We have staff that are, um, sharing offices and during the pandemic, it was actually useful to have schedules where they're not in the same space at the same time. And that's, that's been nice, but it's also going to continue to be an issue for us in this building. And there's just not.
Trails in the parking lot?
Well, we're looking at building walls, creating offices.
There's also, and Carl has a better feel of this than I do, but there's commercial. Real estate available in Sandy. I'm not talking for purchase, but for like lease, if we need more office space and.
I gave, I know it's, we're into the report out of time, but since we're talking about this, it's okay. I think it's very important as far, we talked about staff retention and the, the goals and so not just getting new staff. Keeping the existing staff here, creating that flexibility for more work at home, provided it doesn't impact productivity. I think we have to be very careful not to present a must be in the office unless, except for critical functions. Because in a lot of cases, people are more productive, not.
I, I don't, I don't think you're wrong there at all. I, I, and I think there's a lot of, um, there's just a lot of resistance to going back to work. There's a lot of people that say I'd rather not be at work than have to go back to work. But we are a, we are a community-facing organization just by nature, right?
Versus back office functions or even how you staff those critical. I, I think we gotta make this place as attractive as possible and it might reduce our need for office space as well.
An awful lot of interface between our community and the staff in the city. So I think there's important to be here at regular hours and something that can be used as a way for people to interact. Make sure those permits are taken care of, make sure those questions are answered. And you can do those sometimes by phone and by virtual even. But some things are best done face-to-face.
So you're talking about a critical function, so it's public facing. But so with Tyler, I mean, I don't need to come into the office and say, Tyler, I got a question, budget, I, I can call him and he's gonna answer. Probably good chance he'll answer at six o'clock at night, you know, whereas he wouldn't be if he were here, so.
Tyler, don't do that anymore.
I, I just, just thinking in my, my business, it, there is certain things that are critical. You have to talk face-to-face. And there's some things that are beneficial and they lead to good decisions if you're able to communicate. Somebody talked about the water.
So it is a perspective. I just think, my perspective coming from a federal agency, the office has been true. We've been more productive.
I can't say that.
I'll, I'll just loop in on this because I'm going through this exact same thing. As you guys have heard, we've had some people leave my office and, and that. And we've done this whole hybrid, exactly the same thing. And for my, what I've communicated across our agency is not all jobs are equal. Not all jobs are same. And we have many jobs that are more productive, like you said, but we have other jobs that I need people there every single day. Like, that is the type of job it is. Um, we are a public facing, but there is the back of the house, we'll call it. Or in my world, you know, a lot of technology, we have people that have to be there, but then we have, I have three quarters of them, they can be in Florida. Who knows where they're at? I don't want them in Florida, you know, like, but you want the, you know, depending on that particular task. And society has changed. We're not going back to two thousand nineteen and we're not, but we need to have some type of, I don't even want to call it a policy. Because some people can bait, should be a policy or not be a policy, as in that, but having it, we've created a framework with guardrails around things. I'm not saying that even needs to come to council. That is something that should be management, um, in that, in how they work it. But just what we're going through right now, so that, you know, it's still up to the supervisors' discretion, but it comes to the retention. Cause I'm trying to hire people and I'm in the IT field now, but I have, we have a spectrum at, at the SD from education. All the way, you know, both sides of it. And people want that flexibility and culture and to the point of standing with saying, they will quit. They have to come back or don't have a flexibility and go find another job very easily. And so to the credit of wanting to attract and retain, down to, it better be on the job description that you can do this, or else they're just not applying. And that's a big fear of people, um, living it today, right now, and I've been communicating that with a lot of people. Good, bad, whatever people think, culture's changed from two thousand nineteen. And I think with a small, I have a small office. I know Jordan probably doesn't think I have a small office, but I have a small office area and we're running out of space. We all came back, we couldn't fit in it. Same thing here. And so, you know, what does that look like? I don't know about needing to lease buildings if we have those opportunities. We'd have the top of the bunker building. But, you know, that, that comes back to the community campus. How does it get designed, right? I think that's a big design thing too, because my office just went to Cube Farm right before twenty twenty. And then everyone wants to, you know.
No wonder they don't want to.
Right. Well, I mean, you had offices, you, six months before you went to cubes and then we went into pandemic and then we get scolded for taking the cube, you know. It was not my decision, but the point being is, is there's a lot of creativity that I think can go into that. But, um, back to that point of having that flexibility, I think it's gonna be able to retain staff. It's so much easier to retain staff. Than to go hunting and then to pay more in training and all that. Oh, I'm so sorry. You hit a passionate point, okay, passionate point, something, even though I go to work every single day.
So do I. It's weird. Not every day, but when I go, I have to go.
All right, so, uh, the police building, uh, since the chief's still sitting there. Um, I brought this up several years ago. It's, uh, the paint on the building has deteriorated. I know this because probably got the same paint I had on my house, which is the evolution of Miller, uh, Miller paint. They had a thing back in the day that it failed because it looks the same. I had mine redone here two years ago. But it looks really bad. It looked bad two years ago and fading out. Probably because the defect of the paint, uh, on it, but we're having a new building built right next to it. We can just. I mean, it, it, I mean, that bellyboard green has been, and it, it's just the paint. What had a defect in it. If it was, I know, because that's what happened my, back a certain couple of years, all the paint had a defect. So it needs to, it, it really needs to get painted.
We were gonna do it last year and then we had some issues with COVID and with COVID restraints and things like that. We already had a bid for it and now, so it's on the list. We just had a pressure wash just the other day.
But Jordan's not picking the colors.
I, I suggest the exact same color.
Colors are staying the same. It should be.
The colors are the same.
No, 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 it, it. Good question. It might be in urban, you know, because we made it paid for out of urban renewal. So you may want to check. I don't know. It's either right on the, I think it is. I think we used urban renewal when we did that and then created another one.
And then don't freak out when you see the sticker shock of, of what it's gonna cost.
I, I already know it's gonna cost, but, but there's a portion of that, I think, that we're getting from another department or another.
Okay, so anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. I, you know, it's been kind of the thing, it comes out, it's, maybe, but it's really standing out and it makes it look like, wow, Sandy. You know, can we keep that? Okay.
We will get it painted.
Without Jordan.
On a dry day, without a forest fire.
You know, Jordan, you're never, you're never getting out of that one.
I own it. It's terrible.
So this has come up in the past. We brought it up. I think we even tried writing a grant, but I had a citizen wants me to make sure I bring it up here again. There, if there, we have the most beautiful viewpoint in, I'd say, the Western United States, right? I mean, it's gorgeous, country viewpoint and to somehow put a camera on there that can be seen. I know we've gone for grant or whatever, but you know, as from marketing trend to the. To the. Tourism to get on K E T U, whatever, show them the weather, whatever, you know, get it out there. You know, we need to do that anyways, bring it to the council. Not asking for, you know, what we do with it, but I went on the top of our minds to go, one, there's a cost to it, right? You aren't buying a hundred and twenty-nine dollar camera for it. If there's obvious a cost, we have some.
We have funds coming though.
But do we get the proof for it?
No, we have our, we have.
Oh, yeah. So I mean, we've got bandwidth, which will, you know, is one constraint, you know, within, that, that can be hooked up through. Sandy net and all those others.
I wrote the grant.
Right.
And I have all the costs and everything else. I could tell you what it would cost. It's not that much and we, we can, yeah.
We could just hook it up the back of Kathleen's house.
Right. Anyways, it, it's just it come up and from a, a citizen, a past counselor from years ago that. And come and bring it to the whole council with, just to.
It would be safe with your house.
I think it would, you know, a great idea. I've always wanted it. I've been a pro one on that, but.
It could happen. So I think Rochelle would, is, you know.
Yeah, I think you got a council majority. I don't want that anybody would say no to that.
Well, as long as there's some way to protect it from it getting punted down the hillside.
Well, I'm not, I'm not joking about Kathleen's house.
No, it's on a power pole.
So you would put. You would put it up in here.
Yeah, it's, it's on a powerful way up in the air.
But anyway, those can be discussed at another time too, or have staff bring back something with Kathleen's last proposal, you know, from the grant or whatever. But just, that's all I had.
All right, cool. And not much to report. Just thank you, everybody, for joining us on Saturday. Great live, a great lively conversation on the community campus and different topics. The, the one thing I would, the one thing I would. The one thing I would say though is. And I said this a little bit at our retreat, is I think we end up focusing a lot in here on stuff that our neighbors and our community doesn't necessarily think or want us focusing on all the time. And we do that because we have to, like wastewater, right? That not, no one in the community understands the stuff we're doing on wastewater. We have to do the stuff on wastewater. But my general point is, is when I go to my email and when I talk to community members right now. They're, they're bugging me on homelessness, on the questions that you were asking. And they're bugging me on, you know, the crime rates going up. And what are you guys doing, you know, to address that? And it's, so I just, I, I just want to reemphasize that is, is not saying that we're not doing important things and focusing on things we need to. We, we, these are all important things that we're focusing on. But let's not forget, like, I mean, we are all elected by and tasked with taking on the issues. You know, that are top of mind and important, our community members. And those right now, those are the, those are the issues. Couple of years ago, when traffic diverted because of wildfires, it was traffic, right? But I'm not hearing a lot of traffic right now. I'm hearing crime and I'm hearing homelessness. So I know we've talked a lot about getting this task, you know, task force has been meeting and we're talking about getting our big, you know, work session that we're going to do on that. We need to get that going, you know. And we had a great conversation at a retreat with the chief about different things that are going on. We're fully staffed with the swearing in, you know, for the time being, but we got somebody kind of in the process of a rehire going on. But we just, we need to be really intentional with those conversations. Maybe need to have chief coming in a little bit, you know, in the hot seat. So it speaks not really a hot seat, you know, we believe in him and his department, but what's going on, you know? Let's get those updates and, and what we're talking about. But I'm going to be more intentionable, attentionable, intentional about it. Please keep me accountable and each other accountable on it. But you know, when we're seeing what our neighbors are talking about, we need to be bringing a lot of those discussions in here, you know, and making sure that we're keeping those top of mind. So that's something that's on my mind. And then, you know, our community, our greater Sandy community lost somebody, you know, over the weekend. Owner of Country Coffee, you know, and Joseph, it's just fantastic person that really had no quit. Had no quit, never stopped dreaming and just really had that can-do attitude that really kind of. Represent resemble what we're all about, you know, in our community of Sandy. It's just going to be a great loss. But her, her message and her spirit will continue on. So with that, great meeting tonight. Thank you, everybody. I will go ahead and adjourn.